Good evening and welcome to the April 25th Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk would please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Mugrow?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger will lead us in the invocation and then we'll do the pledge after that. Nika Sanders, whatever.
As we gather tonight, we're grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Here it is. All right. Here we go.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicely done. Nope, you've got to stay up here, buddy. You're not done yet. Very, very nicely done. So we have Ava Rubin from Oakwood here this evening. I've got something for you. We have Azelia Gowell. Gowell, I'm sorry, Gowell from Shapiro. We have Xander Gowell from Shapiro. And we also have Lucas Paxton. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. If you guys want, you want to turn around right here, maybe mom or dad can snap a few photos of you guys. Why don't you come right up here? Don't worry, they'll smile behind us, too. I swear. All right? Nicely done. Appreciate you guys coming on. Have a great night. Thank you. All right. So now our next presenters have a tough act to follow after that, I swear. So we're going to move into a presentation by council candidate. So we have a vacancy on the council and we've got to take up a discussion this evening and a vote to fill that vacancy. A little bit of the process, just so everybody's aware of it, council and candidates included. We've got, what are we down to? We're at eight candidates? My numbers are right? We've got eight candidates in front of us. All eight will be invited up. We give you about five minutes to speak to us. You'll come up here and chat with us. And then, at the end of each of yours, council may or may not have some questions for each individual. After that, we'll bring it up to council for a council discussion and then we'll go through a nomination and voting process. And we can talk about that more as we get there. But first up, if we want to move right into council candidate presentations, we do have Indira Pulakandam, but I believe she may not be here this evening. Just want to make sure that that's still right. If Indira's here? Okay. So next up, and actually I should also note, the candidate list did start with 11. We did have three that have withdrawn in the last day or so. Those would be Vicky Redlin, Mark Showers, and Christopher Hibbin have all withdrawn from the process. Just wanted to make sure I announced that and noted that. So next up actually would be former council member Aaron Wojciechowski, if he'd like to join us. Good evening, Aaron.
I'm a little under the weather, but happy to be here. So, well first, thank you Mayor Mugrow and the council members, deputy mayor as well, for allowing me this opportunity today. I do, I must admit, it does feel a little strange being on this side of the room after being on the other side for two years, but I also don't envy the tough decision that you all have to make tonight. You know, there are many great leaders in this room today, all of whom who are qualified for this position in their own way. But for myself, I began my journey in public service at age 19, and it was one of the greatest accomplishments in my life. But it's been a very humbling and a very significant learning experience these last six or so years. The last two years serving on council, though, have given me insight into the importance of a functioning government. And I wanted to just share a couple of those tidbits that I learned serving these last two years on council. Putting people first, authenticity and empathy, collaboration, respect for differing ideas, and the commitment to nonpartisanship. These are just a few nuggets of wisdom I learned from my colleagues on council and just in my experience being in local government. So why did I apply? Just for a couple of reasons. So given my age and identities, I've felt the great responsibility to be that voice for those who, you know, don't have a voice in the decision-making process. It's always been my motivation for me, and I hope that I've inspired others to see that it's possible to be in positions of power despite any barriers they may face. But really what it comes down to for me is making my community a better place. That will always be my prime motivation. And I feel as though I've had the opportunity to do that here on council, whether it be sustainability efforts or pushing the envelope on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. I've not shied away from having the tough but necessary conversations. And many of us have had these conversations on council and I've enjoyed those. So I'll keep this short, but with all of that said, I believe there's much more work to be done and that it would be my honor to continue on this council-serving line alongside all of you. So I hope that when you vote today, you'll consider my experience, my values, my passion, and my commitment, and my desire to always do good for the people of Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
If you want to stay up, it'd be best to probably do questions for each candidate after they speak. Don't be afraid to hit the button and you'll get called on. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll ask this of everybody, but what do you think of our form of government? Do you support it and why or why not?
Yes, I do. Do you mean in terms of like city manager style government?
Former government, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I do. And when I was running in this past election, that question came up a couple of times and I do support it. Support the city manager style because I believe that we need a professional running our government. And I've enjoyed learning the different forms of government being on county board as opposed to how we function here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I think we have a tough decision here tonight. We've got eight or nine people. If you were in my position, you were interviewing the other candidates that were coming forward, could you tell me what position, statement, idea that you would be looking for in a candidate? One or maybe two, you know, the high points or why you feel that individual would be the best for the job?
Yeah, so I think one, experience is very important, just knowing how government functions. I think, you know, it's not required to be, to have experience. You know, I started at 19 and knew nothing about government, but learned along the way. But with having so many new members on council, I think there's a benefit to having someone who's been on for the last two years. But besides that, I think a characteristic quality that I would look for is someone who leads with empathy. I think that's a big leadership quality. I think it starts discussions, people respect it, and they feel respected when you show empathy, and that's something that I've always tried to lead with. Thank you for your question.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stevenson?
So it kind of sounds like maybe you have some unfinished business here. That's kind of what I'm hearing. What are, I guess, some of those things you think you kind of want to keep moving forward or those tasks that you think you could accomplish in this, if you were to fill out the vacancy?
Yeah, so right before I left, I got to serve on the Sustainability Advisory Board and the DEI Committee. And right as I was leaving, both of those groups had finished or were in the process of completing their strategic plans that would set kind of the vision for both of those respective areas for the city of Oshkosh. And even if I'm not on those committees, I don't know if those have been decided yet, but regardless, I would like to be a part of, you know, shaping that and making sure that when we're having those conversations that, you know, we are looking at it through a lens of DEI, you know, with people who actually have those lived experiences and have knowledge on that and just, you know, how it can be an equitable, you know, process. So those are two big areas. I know addressing homelessness was one of our city manager goals, really all of the city manager goals, which I was happy to be a part of, you know, getting passed and making happen. I just really want to see those continue and be a part of that process. But really, at the end, it's working collaboratively is really what I enjoy, just working together, differing ideas, and making things happen.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. So there's times where as a council, we have to make decisions where we may not have a lot of personal knowledge about the issue or experience with that. Can you talk about what your approach is when you're trying to understand an issue that you may not know much about at the moment, but you're trying to juggle multiple perspectives?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think, yeah, we each come into this kind of with our own backgrounds of knowledge and expertise, but I think you have to be somewhat of a generalist to understand all the issues that come to a city. But my approach has always been just, you know, doing my own research, but what that involves is reaching out to those people who do have expertise in that area, because I most definitely do not have expertise in all areas. So working with city manager, you know, to get those resources from city staff to make sure that we have all the knowledge to make an appropriate decision. So really relying on our resources in the city would always be my approach and my fellow colleagues as well.
Good. I have one for you, Aaron. Mr. Wojciechowski, sorry. So recently councils had several larger residential housing development projects before us, received a good amount of feedback surrounding those, from the surrounding neighborhoods regarding those projects, and maybe even their displeasure with the projects, maybe occurring so close to their neighborhoods and maybe even elements that they disagreed with. So would you mind giving us some insight into your thoughts on those projects? You were part of, you know, a little bit of that, right? Give your thoughts on those projects and additionally, more importantly, how you balance the needs of the entire community with the wants of a few?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think one of the challenges of being in local government is trying to find that, especially specifically regarding development, is finding the balance between disrupting a neighborhood, but also making sure that we are having development, because we want people to come to the city. We want to build, we want to have businesses, we want people to start their families here. But I think where that starts is including the communities. And I know we have strong neighborhood associations in Oshkosh, relying on them to get input is important. But at the end of the day, you know, we as a council, council members have to make a decision that's going to, you know, we have to outweigh the pros and the cons. And I think in a lot of these situations, especially the one that council recently voted on, you know, the pros outweighed the cons. But I think listening is the first step, you know, and even if we disagree, as long as we're listening to their opinions, you know, and being respectful about it, I think that's where it starts. So it is tough and there's not one answer for all of them, but it really is just taking in all the different opinions, options, you know, pushing the city manager and city staff to come up with creative solutions if we don't, if we're not finding that solution right now. But yeah, really relying on the information that we're given.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions, council? Mr. Wojciechowski, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up would be Devin Hudak, if you'd like to come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Nice to see you all and congratulations on everyone who was appointed to your position. The five minutes starts now. My name is Devin Hudak. I work at ARC Contracting as an executive assistant to the owner. I have been there since I graduated from UW Oshkosh with a degree in human services and business. I've loved the city of Oshkosh. When I ran for this open seat of city council, I made it abundantly clear and I will do it again that Oshkosh is the place that I would like to have and raise a family. So I have genuine ties to wanting to make this city the best place to work, live, play, et cetera. Along with working at ARC Contracting, I work at Discover Oshkosh. I work alongside Amy and her crew to just promote Oshkosh in all of its glory, because it is such a great place and we want everyone to come and enjoy it. With working at Discover Oshkosh, one of my big promotions or big things that I would love to do if I was appointed on city council is just showing off how great our downtown is and not only showing off how good it currently is, but improving it to make it everything that it can be and more. I mean, we had an expert come in and show us some stuff that we could change, improve, and attract more people to the area, which is, I feel like everyone's goal is to attract and retain people in the city of Oshkosh. Along with my professional life, I work, or I sit on the Oshkosh Kids Foundation Board. I have strong passion for kids in the area. The Tiny Home Village is one of the projects that we have currently, we're in the middle of. It's there, but we are making sure that families are moving in, that it is going according to plan. Along with Oshkosh Kids Foundation, I sit on the parks board for the city of Oshkosh. So I have a strong tie to wanting to make sure that we have beautiful parks, which we do, and making sure that everyone knows about these parks, what we can offer, what we can improve on, and hearing feedback from there. Along with the parks, I sit on the Propel the Oshkosh Young Professionals Program, which our mission is to attract and retain young professionals, which I feel like is a direct tie to what my goal on the city council would be, would be to attract and retain people to the city of Oshkosh to work, live, and play. So those are my main points that I have so far.
Questions from council? Councilmember Esslinger, go right ahead and then followed by Councilmember Builo.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to ask everyone the same question. You're sitting in this spot and you're listening. What's going to trip you to want that individual to serve on the seat?
Yeah, I think a little bit of humility, a little bit of empathy, as Aaron had mentioned. Just being forthcoming for sure that I am not an expert in local government. This is my first time running in a race, but that I do have a genuine passion for learning and improving things that I can. So if I do not know the answer to a topic or if I do not know something right offhand, I will do my due diligence to talk to the experts to figure out exactly what I need to learn and make a best-informed decision from there.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Builo?
Thank you. What perspectives do you think that you can bring to the council that are not already represented?
I think a different perspective would be that just Propel the Young Professionals Organization that I sit on. It is, again, our mission is to attract and retain young professionals. I feel like it is a unique group of the city of Oshkosh. We're trying to do some more talks at the University of Oshkosh to try and get students, when they're sophomores and juniors, to realize how great this city is and really trying to hone an effort in on making sure when they graduate, showing them, you don't have to leave, like this is a great place, that you could stay, work, play, et cetera. So I feel like that is a different perspective and different avenue that I could bring to the council.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, same question. Do you support our current form of government and why or why not?
I do support it. I think we, having the expert knowledge of somebody who went to school to be a city manager is an invaluable piece of the puzzle and I diverse, I say that they are the ones that went to school for this, and I think it is absolutely the best way that we should run it.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about how you, if you were appointed, how you would kind of involve residents in decisions that you make or kind of learning about an issue?
Yeah, I'm pretty much an open book, so I have no problem sharing emails, phone numbers, et cetera, and encouraging if someone has a question, concern, et cetera. I would love to hear it and genuinely hear their side of whatever their concern, or even if it's a positive thing. I just want to hear feedback from the city, as this would be the first time I'm running for something like this. I'm not an expert, but maybe someone has more information than I do, and I'm all ears in hearing what they have to say.
Councilmember Stevenson?
So, excuse me. I think we can all agree, we all really like Oshkosh. It's a great place to live. What's, is there something that you think isn't great about it or something you would want to maybe improve as setting up here as a council member?
Yeah, I think our downtown is beautiful right now. I think it can definitely be improved. I would love to see the storefronts filled. I would love to see new businesses come to Oshkosh. I think that brings benefit both obviously to the entrepreneurs and the people who live here. It's bringing, it's bringing business to the area, it's bringing new stuff for people to see. Along with that, I feel like transportation, taking a look at city buses, the routes, timings, et cetera. For the Oshkosh Kids Foundation, the reason we chose the location is because it is on the bus route. And I know there are some complaints about timing of busing, et cetera, and I would love to see if there's any way we can maybe improve that or see if there's anything from there that we can improve and just try and best fit everyone in the community.
Cool. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thanks. Can you talk about what you think the primary role or function is of a council member?
A primary role of the council member is to city manager, just to make sure that what his role is, is we are making sure that he's doing his best for the city of Oshkosh and that we're assisting. And if any other questions come up, that basically we're assisting his role in any way possible.
So same question that I asked Aaron and I'll ask it of everybody as well. So obviously recently we had some several larger housing development projects before us, lots of feedback from surrounding neighborhoods, you know, dislike and displeasure with some of the projects and some of the attributes of the projects. Give us some insight into your thoughts on some of these projects that we've had, and additionally just how you balance the needs of the entire community over the wants and desires of a few.
Yeah, I definitely hone in on what the experts have to say, the ones building the project, the ones that are planning, et cetera. I'll always listen to what they have to say, and nine times out of 10, they're going to have the best option for what they think is going to be best for this area, but that's not to say it's not the best fit for the city of Oshkosh. So kind of taking, like Aaron said, the pros and cons to both. I think just really listening to what the concerns are and working with the experts and seeing if there is any way we can meet in the middle, if there is no way we can meet in the middle, and then just making the best informed decision possible for Oshkosh as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Builo has a follow-up.
Thank you. It's just something that I thought of, because you mentioned that you ran in this race. What's one thing that you would change for your campaign to help you resonate your message to more people? What's something that you want to do up here to be able to reach more people than, you know, during your campaign?
Yeah, as far as like saying if I would get on, if I...
Either something that you would do differently in your campaign or something that you would do to change what, you know, when you are up here, to get your message to more people and to receive messages from more people?
Oh, yeah. More yard signs, for sure. But I think just anytime, I think I did, as many people that reached out for me to speak at whatever forum they had, I believe I, unless I missed an email, did all of those. So just continuing to, those groups that reach out and are providing that opportunity to speak on the topics in the campaign, just taking all those opportunities, because you don't know who's going to be in the crowd or what message, and just taking all those opportunities, I think, is key. So if I missed any, then I would love to do those in the future, but otherwise, I think that's the best way, is getting out there and speaking in a forum and reaching as many people as possible.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Adam Bellicorelli. Adam, would you prefer this over?
Just come down.
It should come down.
Or, yeah, if you have another one.
It's fine.
Five-minute stand-up riff. Does that work? All right. Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Adam Bellicorelli. I am involved in all sorts of things around Oshkosh. And I sent my resume in, so if anybody really wants to know, you can read that. I have a degree in philosophy and a master's in public administration. I have experience in local business and nonprofits, as well as community health and equity. And I think a lot about the sort of place Oshkosh is and why people get involved and the impact people make in leadership roles. When we fill out the application to do this, we have no idea who else is going to apply or, but we have a belief about what sort of place Oshkosh is and the sort of place we want Oshkosh to be. We aren't competing against one another up here. We want to live in a place where people show up when there's a need. We want to live where every member of our community feels like they have a voice and they belong. And we want to live where leaders are intentional about how their decisions impact everyone in the community. I believe our community is stronger when our organizations and governing bodies are led by people with shared experiences of the community members, and where community members see representatives who they identify with. I also believe we're at our best when we pick smart, compassionate people to fill these important roles that decide our housing, our transportation, our neighborhoods, our water quality, all the things that council is responsible for. And lucky for us, the idea of diverse representation and high-quality leaders are not mutually exclusive. So looking at the names that were on the list tonight, I see the kind of people I want representing me and Oshkosh. So I'm not here tonight to ask for you to pick me specifically, but to remind you to think about what sort of place you want Oshkosh to be and make a selection that diversifies our community leadership and helps more people feel included and see themselves represented in public spaces.
Well, thank you. First questions. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, sir, you're up here. What qualities do you feel you would look for in a person that you'd want to fill this seat?
So it's tricky. So I personally, I would pick a woman to be in and fill this role rather than myself, just because I think men have had plenty of time to screw up politics for years, and so we need a bit of a switch there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
I got to say, Adam, I come from a family of three sisters and my mother, and yeah, I've been told that since the day I was born. But it was the 90s in Chicago, so we had the bull, so life was good. You know what I'm going to ask you. Former government, how do you feel about it and why or why not?
Well, I went and got a master's degree in it with some wonderful teachers, and so I'm a big fan. I believe the more that we can pick representatives to make the important decisions in community guided by the professionals that are on staff, that's best for the whole community.
Thank you. Mr. Builo?
Thank you. What perspectives do you think that are needed on council today, then, and how can you help us meet those?
So I was looking at the photos of council out in the hallway before the meeting tonight, and I noticed there's a trend. And the more that our community diversifies, I think it's really important for the council also to diversify and represent the lived experiences of the people in our community.
Then I'll go. So same question. Did you want?
Yep. I was simply just going to say thank you for coming up here and kind of speaking, so I don't have a question, but thanks. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Same question I've asked. We've had some larger residential housing developments, projects before us. Neighborhoods, you know, not always happy regarding all the attributes of some of those projects. Can you give us some insight into your thoughts on those projects, as well as just how you'll balance the needs of this entire community over the wants of a few?
So I believe that doesn't, there's no one answer to that. It's always that discussion among the representatives who are chosen. And so the more that people can have open, honest discussion in these public forums and listen to people that come in, listen to people that reach out via email or phone call when things are, you know, coming up on the agenda, the more that there's outreach to the community for people whose voices are not usually heard. All of that input, I think, goes a long way to creating the best possible outcomes.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Lakeisha Hayes.
And I apologize if I said your name, last name incorrectly. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Yep, it's perfect. Thank you. Well, I get to go after Adam.
Tough act to follow.
Speaking of me, actually. No, I'm just kidding. So you would think after all this time of introducing myself that I would be very used to this and come up with something new to say, or at least have it memorized, but I don't. So just to give an additional amount of background outside of what I submitted, I am a 26-year resident here of the city of Oshkosh. I moved here to attend UW Oshkosh. After graduating, this is where I, you know, planted roots, building my family, raising two kids in the public school district. It's where I met my husband, and this is where we have decided to devote our efforts into making sure that our families and everyone else's family is enjoying the city in which they live in, that they are proud to live in the city, that they are contributing to the city, and that they are welcoming everyone into the city. I have a legal background. I've worked with a number of diverse groups. I work with people from diverse backgrounds. I've collaborated with, I've worked alongside, I've been colleagues with, I've advocated for those with diverse backgrounds, and that is something that I am committed to. And I have been even more so involved in that over the last couple of years. And again, this all goes back to me, goes back for me with family. And again, this all goes back to me, goes back for me with family. I had spent a number of years living in this community pretty much with my head down, minding my business, doing my job, and that was it. I think having kids and realizing just how important the community in which you live in is positive for your family is when I decided to be a lot more active in our community. So, I have participated in a number of boards, I sit on a number of boards, I volunteer so many places that I will not list them. I try to rotate them through, given the time. I am currently in Leadership Oshkosh, graduating shortly from there, and I am on the DEI Committee here, as well as the Oshkosh Area School District DEI Advisory Committee. And one of the things that is important to me in all aspects of my life and in what I view as important with government is to be intentional, purposeful, and impactful. And so, that is why I am choosing to apply and ask for the appointment, is because I believe that being a part of your community, being a part of City Council, it's those three things. I believe in being accountable and transparent, and so that is what I would forever be focused on as a council member. And as far as the person that I think that should be chosen, it's someone with all of those qualities and someone with the same qualities that Adam Bellicarelli had stated, and that's me in a nutshell.
All right. Well, thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Wessler.
Thank you. Ma'am, I think maybe you've answered this towards the end of your speech, but just to give you a chance, you're sitting in the chair, what, you know, quality or qualities would you be looking for in that individual?
And yes, so it is having, it's that intentional, purposeful, and impactful service to your community, transparency. One of the things that I'm also, for me, I always look for any possible conflicts that someone may have because that...
I'm sorry, what was that?
Conflicts. I want to make sure there are none. So, it's not just the qualities, but some of the things that could be a bar to fully serving in any capacity whatsoever, but that is what I would be looking for.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, my usual question and then a second one, too. So, yeah, what do you think of our former government? Do you support it and why or why not?
I do support it, and I, for the sake of efficiency, for the same reasons that the prior candidates stated as well. I respect our form of government. I have the most respect for City Manager Roloff, appreciate his responsibilities and his expertise, and I appreciate that the collaboration with City Council and the entirety of the city of Oshkosh has been working and hopefully progressing moving forward.
So, quick follow-up, since you brought up transparency, in my side career, my real job, I'm constantly surveying council members around the country about how they define these vague concepts. Just curious, like, so what does transparency mean to you?
Transparency means to me that not only are you forthcoming with information, that you are not omitting information as well. I think being forthcoming means that you are providing as much information as possible so that there's not a single misunderstanding, that there's not this idea that there's a conflict of interest of any kind, that your intentions are apparent, they are noticeable and non-questionable. That is what transparency means. I think especially right now in government, even on the national level, we do have significant mistrust of government, and a lot of that could, not necessarily, a lot of that could be lessened, I think, if there was more transparency. Forthcoming with information, being available to people to answer questions is another way of being transparent as well, and that's what we, and I'm not saying we have, it's lacking here in the city of Oshkosh, but I'm saying that it is important for transparency.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Bielo.
Yeah. Do you want to speak a little bit, how do you think your experience as a judge or your past practice as a lawyer could benefit, I guess, opinions and diverse thinking up here?
Yes, so, as an attorney, as I indicated, I've worked with a number of different organizations, people with diverse backgrounds and advocacy. I have also, I'm sorry, I'm off this drive. I've also worked in the same idea as a judge, I've done the same thing. So, it's really a balancing of information. I have had to make tough decisions both as council and as a judge. Most importantly, as a judge, it is being able to listen to all sides, weigh the information that you've been provided, being prepared, doing the research, the homework on the information that you have to make or the subject matter that you have to make a decision on. And it is having a temperament in which people, that is palatable to people, but being able to be assertive and make tough decisions at the same time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bielo.
And I'm going to stick with my typical questions. What are you going, how are you going to work to bring perspectives to the council that we don't typically have?
Let me get something to drink.
Yep.
Yeah, no.
Ah. I think you drank right in front of me.
I know, it was not a...
Not a good look.
Water funnels way down there. That way.
Oh.
Oh, jeez. This is a...
Just have like a stack of water bottles.
Whoever you pick, I'll make sure they know that the water bottles are in the refrigerator.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
We should get that clock updated to the right time. Would be okay. I'm assuming computer time. Yeah.
I feel like that Jim Carrey, whatever. Go ahead.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Sorry. Movie where he's like, anyway, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. There's my personality. You can make things awkward real fast.
So, my question.
Sorry.
Hopefully now that you can talk.
Yes.
What would you do to bring perspectives to this council that you don't, that we don't already have up here?
Beyond, like, my lived experiences. So, I do think representation matters. It absolutely matters, and someone's lived experiences, everyone's lived experiences are valuable to the collaboration and to the decision-making that is necessary. And that's what I'm bringing to council, is my lived experiences. Sorry, rant. So, that, bringing that, as well as what I've done over the last, especially the last two years, is speaking with members of our community at a level where it is personable and intimate, and really talking to those in our community about what they want, what their expectations are, what their, you know, what they want for their families. I've been able to do that over the last two years more intensely than before, so I would also be bringing that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Similar theme, two questions I've asked before. What would be your approach to understanding an issue or a decision that we have to make that you may not have personal experience with, or, you know, you're just trying to learn more? What would be your approach?
That hits on my, what I stated as being prepared, preparedness. I do have a reputation for being preparedness and gathering information, and I know it was spoken on previously, but it's asking experts, asking people that have more information than you may have. I've never claimed to have all of the information, I know that's impossible, but I like to hear different perspectives, and I want people that do have knowledge to weigh in on that. And that is, it's so crucial for people, it's crucial for people to be able to ask for help, it's crucial for people to be able to ask for more information. And so, that is truly for me, and I feel like I'm in a pageant now, but I think that it's important to gather that information, ask experts, and it's having connections, it's having the ability to ask the right people and knowing who the right people are asked, so that's, that would be me.
Thank you. And second question, what do you see as the role or function of a council member?
Partially, in what I stated before, it's making those decisions that pretty much govern the city of Oshkosh in a collaborative way with the city manager and with the entire city of Oshkosh, but it's the legislature portion of our city, so that's what I see it as.
Looks like it's me. You hit a key word for me before, prepared. So, tonight, we're going to, we have on the agenda tonight, we've got bids and purchases totaling about almost $2 million, we've got zoning changes that affects a residential neighborhood, we're going to give initial approval for $6.5 million in debt, approving a development agreement for one of the biggest development projects we've seen in quite a long time. Have you reviewed tonight's agenda? Are you prepared to discuss and vote on the things that are going to be immediately in front of you, you know, upon swearing in?
Would I be prepared for those things tonight?
Yeah.
I would not.
Good.
Although I've reviewed it, have I been privy to all of it? No.
Yeah.
No.
That's okay.
So, with that, I would not give a vote that I was not confident in giving just to vote. I would not, not in this situation.
Okay.
No.
That's a fair answer. Same question as everybody else. Received feedback regarding some of our larger residential apartment-type complex projects, lots of neighborhood feedback on the displeasure of some of those attributes or some of the elements of those. Give us some insights into your thoughts on specifically, you know, those projects, as well as just how you balance the needs of a full community versus, you know, what I'm terming the wants of a few.
Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, because it is true. I would be echoing the same responses that the prior candidates echoed. I have people on both, or multiple sides of that, those in support and those that were against it. And when you're balancing, as you said, the needs of the majority over a few, I think there's a number of reasons why people may be opposed to it, and there is also a way that you are able to communicate with others to make sure that everyone has all that information. I think the fear of what could possibly come out of those projects was a lot of the driving force behind, at least the people that I know specifically, that were not in support of it. But being able to discuss it further, I think people became open to that. It's the fear of what it could become, not of what has been presented, that I think caused a lot of the angst around that, for the people I know. I'm only speaking for the people that I know.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Chris Ulrich. Come on up and join us. Welcome.
Good evening. I think I'll need to readjust the mic.
It might not go up that high.
It's a live, 10 world.
Not fair.
I think it's perfect. All right. Ready, Mark?
I'm ready. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, my fellow citizens of Oshkosh. My name is Christopher Ulrich. It's a privilege to be here among these esteemed candidates for this at-large position and a joy to set myself apart to try to convince you why I would be a good fit as a councillor among your ranks. I am a product of our city. I was born at Mercy Hospital, I've lived in homes and apartments on the South Side, West Side, town of Elgoma, and for the last 10 years, I've been a North Sider, living on Irving Avenue by Menominee Park. I understand the distinct identities throughout these regions of Oshkosh because I've been a part of many different neighborhoods. My family heritage in the city extends back five generations before me, and remnants of our homestead are even operating today as the Matuli Family Farm in what is now Nakaimai. I am an example of what our school system can accomplish, from Oakwood Elementary to Carl Treger Middle School and Oshkosh West. I will forever be grateful for the opportunities that our public schools have provided for myself and thousands of others. What a benefit for our city. I took advantage of CAP courses at Oshkosh, at UW-Oshkosh while in high school, and while I opted to go to Luther College in Iowa for undergrad, I completed my master's in business administration back home at UW-Oshkosh, Hail Titans. My wife, Bridget Duffy Ulrich, is the choir director at Oshkosh North. When I speak with her students, many of them can't wait to get out of Oshkosh. Surely some of you have felt that way in your teens, eager to be away and taste independence. I can relate. And I always tell my students that it's healthy to go see the world and learn from other people, but remember to come home and bring all that you've learned back to improve your city and help all of us. I've brought that knowledge home with me. I spent time abroad as an international student in Germany. I've come home and translated countless documents for friends and churches to connect with their history. Our city has a rich German heritage, and I'm proud to play my part in keeping it alive. When I left the workforce in 2018, when our first daughter, Charlotte, was born, since then, I've been the parent who stays at home with our children while my wife goes to work, and I've come to take on the work-life title of professional volunteer. From this time onward, I've completed Leadership Oshkosh, worked with my Neighborhood Association Steering Committee, and served in the city's Landmark Commission and Stormwater Board. If you elevate me to your ranks, you would benefit from the knowledge and experience that I've gained from those two boards in particular. You wouldn't have to designate a new council member to them, and I would continue to serve on them as a council rep who actually wants to be there instead of simply serving as a liaison who shows up on occasion, which can sometimes happen. I am most proud, however, of being a Rotarian. For the last eight years, this has been the most defining element of my character. Rotary has introduced me to the most influential change-makers in our community. I've taken advantage of literally hundreds of opportunities to volunteer near and far. I was on the board of NINA Rotary for seven years, serving as club president for two consecutive during COVID, and I've since transferred back home to Oshkosh Southwest, where I've been able to dive right in as an active and very visible community member. In fact, it was Rotarians who encouraged me to seek a spot on council when the time was right. I remember watching one, Jane Lang, run her campaign to seek a spot as NINA Alderman late last decade, and after a few terms, I celebrated her victory when she ran for mayor of NINA, a position which she currently holds today. I am adamantly against partisan politics in local elections. The team sport machinations of national parties have no place in the minutia of our bi-monthly meetings. I'm not a party-line voter, rather I vote on the issues or the content of the character of the individual at hand. When we cast our votes on public works bids, taxation, special events, or other ordinances throughout Oshkosh, we shouldn't seek to bring the ideologies of the left or the right to vie for favor, rather we should continue to consider the voices of our neighbors, the history of our neighborhoods, and the future that we'll be building for our children and generations yet to come. You have a hard decision tonight ahead of you, and I do envy you for having to pick the council member from among our ranks. I urge you to consider the culture of the council that you'll be creating. Who among us can you work best with to advance the development of our city? If you appoint me to this position, you are sending a message that you validate the importance of putting in the work to understand the way that the machinery of City Hall works. You value servant leadership and the Rotarian ideals of service above self. You want a councilman who will treat this position as his vocation, who will go out to listen to, understand, and represent the citizens of Oshkosh. I stand for building a city with progressive ideals and developments necessary for our time while still honoring and caring for the rich culture and history of our city. Both things are possible. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you to my friends and colleagues here tonight and those who emailed on my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wessler, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, sir, if you're up here, what quality or qualities would you like to see?
Well, since you can't read the penmanship of my notes, it's passion, knowledge, and a track record of leadership and community engagement. Someone has to know the community and be willing to go out and do it and have proven that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stevenson, then Councilmember Bielo.
I think first, you should probably give me, like, voice acting lessons or anything like that because you have a great public speaking voice.
Thank you.
But as far as a, like, a goal for the city, do you have anything that you would like to get done or something that you kind of see yourself gearing towards?
It depends on how far you want to go out. In one year, I want to be here to support the public works, and particularly with affordable housing that are going on, that's not going away anytime soon. But if we think about the long-term, downtown is in the process still of becoming fantastic. Think of NINA over the past 15 years and how much that has turned around, and then think of Oshkosh, how much we've made progress since we redid Main Street in particular. The 400 block of Oshkosh is doing great. I think the $500, 500 block of Oshkosh can stand to improve even more, vacant storefronts, et cetera. And I think a part of that really goes to finding better spots for affordable housing or better access to transportation for the people who live in Rolfe Hotel or Towers to actually access the things that they need. I don't know if that would necessarily free up space... I don't know if that would necessarily free up space downtown, but it all ties together to create the look and the feel that we want of a city that is thriving.
Thank you. Mr. Bula.
Thank you. Thank you for a great presentation. I have a different question for you than I've asked anybody else because there's something different about you than than anybody else on the, that is previously spoken. Earlier this month, I wasn't able to vote for you. You didn't run. Why is that and why do you want the council seat now?
I have been very clear that I want to run for council for the last probably seven years to my Rotarian colleagues. And I've stated to people who know me that the time was going to be right when my last child was at least two or three. We have two children. My youngest daughter just celebrated her second birthday yesterday. This is a one-year position, so she fits that last child being two or three. So that's, that's your long and short answer. I don't want to reveal any other details there or go into it. But the timing was perfect, and the intentions have always been there.
Councilmember Ford, followed by Deputy Mayor Erickson.
Same question. What do you think of our former government and why?
Oh, this is a good one. We've had different forms of government, haven't we, in Oshkosh's history? I think our current form of government, as far as representation, is a lot better than it used to be when we had award representatives, et cetera. And I'm sure that in the future, our government might change to fit the needs of the time. But as it is now, I'm very much in favor of it. I think the representation that we have on the council is selected appropriately, and I have a lot of faith in Mark Roloff. I think we need an experienced manager to run the city. And I don't envy the position of mayor of NINA and Appleton in systems where they have to be the person who makes all the decisions and work that Mark does. He can be a specific knowledge set to continue council after council instead of, you know, having so much turnover. And the mayor can serve to be the pinnacle for council, good decision-making, and just a steward for the councils as they go along.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. You mentioned affordable housing. Could you expand a little bit on kind of what your strategy would be or what you think council should be doing around affordable housing or should be doing differently?
Land acquisitions, they need to keep happening, working with farms and development agencies to find the right pieces of land in the right spot. And develop housing that is affordable but high-quality. I think there has to be better care to that. You can put up a four-story building real fast, but if you've got thin walls and low-quality housing, is it really doing much in the long-term good for the city? I think on council, we can be better stewards of maybe the contractors that go to work on these projects.
Looks like it's me. Along those lines, so council's had several larger residential projects, housing development projects before us. Received a lot of feedback regarding some displeasure and some attributes and elements of those projects. Give us your thoughts maybe on those projects and/or just how you balance the needs of this whole community over, you know, what I'm referring to as the wants of a few.
Yeah, the wants of the few are the wants of the many, right? Live long and prosper. What if I asked you a question? Could you tell me what everyone on Percy Street in Oshkosh had in common and what their sacrifices meant for the city? Percy Street was the north half of Menominee Park. So when that land was acquired, those houses had to be torn down. And I'm sure 100 years ago, they were pretty upset about it. But think of the millions of people who have benefited from Menominee Park since then. I like to think I'm a candidate who knows a fair bit about our city's history. And when you can look back at projects that were done 50, 100, or 150 years ago and then see the impact of that to now, I think I have a good way to synthesize that with projects that are happening today and see how they might affect the future. Not necessarily things that were voted on two weeks ago, but a contemporary analog to that. Think of all the houses that are being torn down now on Monroe Street between Parkway and Merritt for the Boys and Girls Club. Might have been contentious when it was being done and certainly sad to lose some of that quality housing. But the benefit that the Boys and Girls Club does for our city, for our neighborhood, for safety, for opportunities for those kids, completely outweighs it. I would be in wholeheartedly if I were voting on any decision like that.
Appreciate it very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, Mr. Sean William Park. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to be up here tonight. I'm very grateful. And I bring to you an opportunity for us to all grow together with an open mind and a very honest approach. I, I'm willing to do the work that is necessary. I've proven with my past history, with the various engagements that I've been involved with, stemming from student government at different universities. I sat on United Council also for the universities of Wisconsin. And I, I bring to you an entrepreneur sense of approach. I, I'm a, I'm a go-get-the-herd finder. I don't believe in getting one. I believe in getting them all and bringing them home for us all. And, and I think that what I would like to do with, with a team such as wonderful people as yourselves and the communities surrounding us, I'd like to help bring the innovative thinking from my education. I have quite a bit of studies in the past. I did obtain a degree at the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh, with the liberal arts and sciences. And, and I feel confident that, that I can help the city go through some of the changes that the macro environment is imposing upon us. There's a lot of, there's a lot of change that's going on in the world today, and there's a lot of things that, that are affecting the common person that maybe we don't all understand as, as an individual. But, but we are being affected greatly by a lot of, lot of things that are, that are happening politically and industrially and environmentally and, and more importantly, with our mental health and, and, and other areas of, of, of changes that, that we as a people are going through with the world. But as Oshkosh, I think Oshkosh is a great home for myself and, and my, and part of my family. I, I did some extensive reading on, on the background of Oshkosh. I can avoid you with what I know. I just am aware of things about Oshkosh in the past that, that history has a, has a sense of repeating itself maybe. But I think that, that some of the resources that, that Oshkosh had as, as, as a people may not be the same as the resources that, that maybe we should be acquiring. I hope to bring to the table the ability to gather capital from other areas of, of just, from, from not within just the short economic environment that we have here. I think more importantly, I can stand up and fight for some of the contracts that maybe we can gain rather than watch walk off the door. I feel, I feel the backlog and, and the infrastructure and, and the labor inefficiency to the plant that we have and, and, and some of the other resources that we had to help grow the community are, are in need of attention. And if given this chance to, to show that I am able to support your decisions that you've already been making all along, and I don't know what, I don't know all the agendas and past history of the recent council. But looking at the agenda tonight, I feel, I feel very, very blessed to see that around me, it was $6 million going out in obligation bonds. That's a chunk of change. That's not as, as, as large as what some may see or some may not see, but, but it's a start. And, and I think we're on the right track with supporting the police department and, and the streets. And, and I feel confident that, that all these special, all these special events that, that we have on our agenda for, for approval are, are signs that the community wants to, to get out and do things. But these changes can, can easily be, be approved. But really, what it comes down to is where are we going to flip the bill? I think I can come to the table and, and let the constituency behind the people of Oshkosh that I go and talk to and will go out and talk to and, and continue to understand and learn how will, will, will help me better bring more capital to the local economy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Bula.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for your, for your presentation, just like everybody else. Same question that I asked for, for Christopher is, you know, we had an election here earlier this month and, and your name wasn't on the ballot. Why do you want to serve now instead of running for, for a full term?
That's, that, mine, I did put my, I did initiate the process last year and this spring. I miscommunication going down to City Hall and learning what the, what the, what the deadlines were was a simple error that I just felt to understand correctly what the, what the exact timeframe was. So I, busy schedule, busy time and resources for, for political party movement and getting people behind me to help generate the signatures for the, for the nomination. If had I, had I been more in tune with the exact process with, with the cycle in Oshkosh, I think I would have been on the ballot. But more importantly, if not now, I accept that and, and I will be back hopefully next spring, God willing.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, sir, if you were up here, had to make a decision, what quality or qualities do you feel would be best for this chair?
I think number one, most importantly, is honesty in all affairs. To be completely honest about no matter what my understanding is or the group-conscious understanding is within inside ourselves, to keep ourselves straight with the, with the ability to, to make the best decision. Sometimes what's best for all is some best for, for, for everybody. I don't believe in all for, all, all for, for, for one and one for all. I believe everybody can work together, and if we listen to each other, I think it comes down to open-mindedness and, and developing skills within inside myself on a daily basis with, with things like my, with my theology and my, my, my mental health and, and, and social, social groups that I participate with. To bring to the table the ability to, to listen and, and, and contribute with all, all, and best, most importantly, honesty.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes, what do you think of our current form of government and why?
I think the legislative process with the city of Oshkosh is definitely effective and has been. And I'm, and I'm grateful to be able to see this experience in full force. And I think it's a winning scenario, and, and there's absolutely a, a better, a better shoe somewhere else for somebody else, but for Oshkosh, that's what works. So if it works, don't fix it.
Go right ahead. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Similar question I've asked before. What would be your approach to learning about an issue or a decision that we're about to make? How do you kind of gather information about that?
The best, the best way for tackling this, for finding a solution is with group-conscious and to discuss immediately and as soon as possible to communicate. And while communicating to reach outside, not just within the circle, but with outside the circle and outside the box. Doesn't mean when I, I want to, to, to talk what, what, what stays behind closed doors, stays behind closed doors. But what was to be shared is to, is for all to understand that we, that we grow together and we reach, we reach for, for the understanding by doing whatever it takes. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes to learn about the situation or the matter or the fair at hand so that we can, we can grow as a team and as a community.
Up to me. So same question. We've had some, several larger residential housing development projects before us lately. Received some feedback from neighborhoods regarding the displeasure with some of the elements of those projects.
Yes, as a.
Give us some insight.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I've, first and foremost that I reflect on with that, that question is the housing on the lake over here, on, on the inland lake outside, on the west side of Winnebago. I, I think that, that I can completely understand and I feel for the people of that area with the, with the number, I believe it was like around a, was it a thousand maybe homes or apartments? Somewhere 900 maybe was it, or six, or six to, I don't know exact numbers, but I know it was quite a few, quite a few apartments going up there. And, and the people in that area were looking at the, the environment and wanting, and wanting to be able to enjoy the environment. There's more than enough area for all of us to enjoy. We have to go with the changes. People are coming to our community. I came to this community. I'm from Appleton, and I seen the growth in Appleton occur. I'd like to see that growth continue in Oshkosh. And in order for it to happen, we have to be open-minded. And yes, this isn't fun when our neighborhood changes necessarily, but change isn't to be feared. It is to be accepted. Doesn't have to mean I have to agree with it, but as a team and as a people, I think we can learn to interrelate and understand how we can accept together, but not always agree, but accept it together.
Thank you very much. Any other council questions? Thank you much, thank you very much, sir.
Now, thank you for your time, and most importantly, I hope that, that I see you again. God bless.
Thank you. Last candidate is Ms. Meredith Shurman. Now, she is not available this evening. She did supply a video that she had pre-recorded. I don't believe council has seen that, if I'm, if I'm correct. Counselor, we just need an AOK from council to play the video. We have a little bit of precedent. I'm pretty sure we did it four years ago, and I just, just want to make sure council's okay with it, so.
Okay with me?
Sounds good, thank you. Do you wouldn't mind queuing that up so we can listen to that, and then we'll proceed after that?
Hello, my name is Meredith Shireman, and I appreciate your consideration for a nomination and eventual vote for the vacancy in the city council. Unfortunately, I'm not able to be in person on April 26th as I have a planned vacation, but that should not deter you from understanding the interest that I have in this position. I've asked and received an okay to go ahead and give you a video. Not, it's not going to be five minutes, but you know, a video of me and why I'm running. I'd like you to consider, we put a man on the moon. We use Google every day. We give a credit card to a stranger when we go into an Uber all the time. We do things that are unprecedented, things we haven't done before. So I'd ask for your continued consideration via video. Think back in COVID, we did most everything via video for that nomination and eventual vote. So 14 years ago, I was on city council, and I sat on the second seat to the left, and I was really proud of my time on that, on that council at that time. I sat with Paul Esslinger, two, like four seats down. And what's interesting about that is I believe back then, and I still believe today, that Paul and I want the same things. We want the city to continue to be a great place to visit, to live, to work, and really to thrive. My time on the council back then laid the foundation for so many developments that are here today. So the River Rock came before us. We got the Menominee Pier out. The Pioneer Project was brought before us numerous times, and lots of development in the center city, all while we took care of our roads and our sewer, you know, one half a block at a time. In addition, I've been on the Board of Zoning Appeals for years and I'm currently on the Plan Commission. So what's interesting about my candidacy is that the, the economic projects that come before you today, I've already vetted out on the Plan Commission. You're looking for, should be looking for, somebody who can jump in, step up, and fill that one-year vacant term. I would say that I would be a good candidate for that. Professionally, I am a vice president at a local bank. I live on the west side. I, my husband of 32 years teaches on the north side. I office in the central city, and I'm an avid runner. And so I've probably traveled, I don't know, 75% of the streets and roads in the city of Oshkosh. I know Oshkosh. I graduated from Appleton East, came to Oshkosh for college, left for five years, and then intentionally came back. We've lived here for 28 years. My husband and I, and our three great children, who also live in Oshkosh, interestingly enough. My husband and I, and our three great children, who also live in Oshkosh, interestingly enough. So I'm running for three reasons. Number one.
Some inopportune pauses, suspense.
Because I care deeply about the city of Oshkosh. Number two, I believe, as many others do, that you need to have diverse, you know, some diversity and some diverse conversations up there on that, on that, on that council. And then finally, Oshkosh is at this really great place where it's, there's such strong momentum and I think that you need positive, forward-thinking people who can keep that momentum going. In conclusion, I know parliamentary procedure. I work with many of the city officials or have worked with the city officials and the departments in the city of Oshkosh. So should you determine that you're looking for a can-do, let's get it done, let's roll up our sleeves, flexible yet agile council member, I'd ask for your nomination and vote. Thank you so much for your time. I'm always open for questions and comments. Take care.
All right, thank you very much. So next up, we'll have public comment on on the presentation and and on those vying for the open seat. It's my understanding, I think we only have two, is Devin Hines here with us? Good. Next up would be Sarah Stitchard. Come on up. If you wouldn't mind giving the council your address when you, when you step up. Just a reminder, comments are limited to five minutes and on the, in this particular case, on the, on the council vacancy and the candidates.
Good evening, city council. My name is Sarah Sticker. I live at 416 West Fifth Avenue and I'm here this evening to support the, support the candidacy of Christopher Ulrich. We have been on the Landmarks Commission together for about one and a half years and he always tries to find a solution to problems. May I notice this when, when we were working on the, the problem of the signage for down, down around the Chief Oshkosh statue? That was a big consternation area, but he came up with some good solutions. He's also a creative thinker. He started, started to have landmark articles in the Oshkosh Herald, which no one had done before. And my final point is, he's very involved in the community. He's on Rotary, he's in the Chamber Singers, he's involved in with his Neighborhood Association and with musical theater. I know that's short and sweet, but that's all I've got. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the, in the audience that wishes to speak on this this evening? Seeing none. So public comment will be closed on this.
Mayor, I believe, sir.
You can come on up if the officer generally, usually has a thing to take a name in a form. If you wouldn't mind stepping up, come on up here, give your name and address. We'll record that, but you're more than welcome. Five minutes and keep it to the topic at hand. Others, we can get it up here.
We'll get it.
We'll get it. He wasn't prepared over there this evening. We didn't, we didn't make him prepared, so.
That's okay. Don't want to put too much on the spot. Howdy, folks. My name is John Gibson. I am a born and raised citizen of Oshkosh and I, I've definitely got.
Can you please give your address?
Oh, my address is currently 371 Northwest Haven Drive, apartment E as in Echo 203, Oshkosh, Wisconsin 54904. In years that I've known Chris and the time I've been able to spend being educated very thoroughly and wholesomely by, by his wife and then getting to know him and his character through that, it's, it's been like revolutionary and very inspiring. It's, it's cool that he's a gentleman I also share like a private kind of artistic interest with and that we both have a YouTube channel. He is incredibly, and that's an understatement, talented, forward-thinking individual. Whether it has to do with home projects or as it extends into matters of the city as well. I've never seen him shy away from any sort of a challenge. He's very open to all sorts of advice and input from all sorts of people. So his tenacity and the way his family values also tie in with the ongoing environment that the city and the world at large continues to swirl in. We definitely want people that will be able to bring a lot more wholesome, rounded and very grounded in civility kind of conversations. I've got not many notes. I think I'm actually doing this 100% on the fly. I think I would be of the utmost confidence with Christopher Ulrich on this council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak so impromptu and on short notice.
Thank you.
At best of luck in your decision.
If there's no one else from the public that wishes to speak, public comment will be closed. Counsel, I'll need a motion and a second regarding Resolution 23175, appoint individual to fill council vacant seat.
So move. Second.
All right. So now, a little bit about the rest of the process. Next up, we'll have council discussion, whatever that may be. If you have further questions for any of the candidates, we can invite them back up for those, for those specific answers. But we'll do our, any discussion that we want to have amongst ourselves. At that point, we'll go to a nomination process where I'll just ask for nominations. No second will be needed. And then we'll close nominations and we'll move towards a voting, a voting process. Voting process will be, we'll call for, the city clerk will take a role and obviously you need four votes to to gain the vacant seat. If after the first round, no one gains that and there's multiple candidates, most likely at that point, then we will, we'll drop off the lowest and we'll move to the typically the highest two that received votes and go to another round of voting. And if needed, subsequent rounds and we can, we can get a little more deep, deeper detail if we have to. So right now, council discussion. Feel free to hit your button and don't be, don't be shy on that and if you have any comments or questions. Councilmember Esslinger, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess maybe a point of clarification first. After we're done giving our speeches and why we're doing what we're doing, do we nominate one person, two people?
Sure.
Can you nominate five people? I'm not sure how that would work.
Yep, yeah, so nominations, we'll open the floor for nominations. Feel free to nominate one, multiple, or all can be nominated for. You only have one vote when it comes time to vote, though.
Right.
But any and all can be nominated and do not require a second.
Okay. All right, then I'll just go into my analysis here, if you will.
Yeah, you've got the floor and then followed by Councilmember Beal after you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you to everyone here and all the individuals that have applied for this. I said when I was running for it that, you know, anyone that does this job, I hope it's the, the funnest job that you had and it's, for me, the most rewarding that I've, that I've done. After I read the packet of the information from the individuals, I thought this is going to be a little bit easier than it, than it is. Boy, so, yeah, I mean, when the people get up here and they talk, you know, it gives the personal value to it, which to me is extremely important. Just for the record, I know one person that's applying for, that's Meredith Shireman. I don't know the other people that are applying. And we had, I think the mayor said here, we had nine, 10, whatever people that applied. I wish this would, and this is a list here, I wish all of these people would have been in February on the, on the ballot because I think each and every one of you has some qualities that I think would be very important for the council. So maybe you're asking, why did I ask people what they would want in a council candidate? The reason I did that is, well, you may think, well, they're just going to tell you the qualities that they have. Well, that may be true, but it may not be true. And I found, after reading the materials here, asking that question, a few of them were, you know, a little bit different in their response of, from what they have and what, what they're looking for. But I think to be fair, I asked them what they're, what they're looking for, so in fairness, I'm going to explain why I'm thinking the way I'm thinking. But first of all, the things I'm not taking into consideration, I'm not taking into consideration someone's age, their race, whether you're a woman or whether you're a male or anything like that. I really wish we could move beyond that kind of criteria because quite frankly, it's not criteria, it's just who you are. I'm going to be crazy and try to just find the best person for the job. So I'm looking for someone that is respectful of this council and more importantly, respectful of the citizens of Oshkosh. That's what you have to be as a representative of the city. And so everyone past that, I think everyone up here is, is a respectful person. I think y'all speak very well and I think y'all have good characteristics for the city. I'm also looking for experience, and let me explain what I mean by that, where you currently work, you know, you have interaction with the city or the citizens, whether you've been on the council or not. And let me dive into that a little bit more. You know, I guess conventional wisdom is maybe you want someone that's been on the council because they know it. And while that can be a benefit, some people would like to put someone on a council or an elected position that have never done it before. Because I think one thing I've found with people that have done something for a long time, when you ask them why they do that, their answer is, well, that's just the way we always do it. And that's a terrible, terrible answer. And so someone that has never done it before is someone that I think is a little more open to different ideas, different thoughts, and is open to listen to members of the council that may have different ideas and you can work with them. And then also, people that are in the community, how are you adapted to the community right now? Again, through your work, through boards and commissions that we have, Rotary, I heard that's one. Another reason, another thing I'm looking for is, it's not someone that just wants to have a resume builder and I didn't see that in anyone that came up here or reading materials. I think you all genuinely want this position and that's, that's fantastic. As far as honesty, some people shined really on the honesty. Ms. Hazy, she was speaking, said she just wants to be honest. It's great to be honest and God bless you for saying that. Again, I know Meredith a bit. I was on with the council with her several years ago. She's a very honest individual and I want to give credit, I don't know if she wants this or not, but I want to give credit to Devin Hudak, who was on the ballot, did not make it, but at the League of Women Voters Forum, of course, we were asked several questions and a few of the times, she just said, you know what, I don't have an answer. I don't really, I'm not versed on that, on that, that issue, but I'll get the answer if need be. And at the end of the forum, I turned to her and I said, you know what, that's got to be difficult. People want to vote for you because you, they want you to know what's going on and you have the gumption to say, I don't know. And that to me is very compelling. I mean, that, that's, you know, you're kind of putting it on the line, saying, I don't know, but I can get the answer. And well, some say, well, you should know. Really? I mean, this is tough, really. I mean, when you get up here the first time and you hear about TIF districts and you hear about the laws and everything that goes on, your head is spinning and it's a, it's a huge learning curve. So I'm looking for someone that has a focus kind of on the large issues. I know we talk about, oh, you know, I don't know, bike lanes and, you know, where we're going to put a statue and all that, that, that's fine. But for me, it's, you know, infrastructure, housing, business, you know, we need more business here. I'd like to see some more Fortune 500 companies coming into this area, so help with that. Again, Devin, who's, you know, involved in different organizations downtown and we've heard downtown mentioned, you know, I applaud people that really take their time and that takes a lot of time. And so I've got, I've got three people that I'm, I would like to bring forward, but as of right now, I'll just, I guess I'll just wait to hear what other folks have got to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Esslinger. Mr. Beal, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor McGraw. Like, like Councilmember Esslinger said, we have just an amazing amount of awesome candidates. I was excited when it got up to 11, when it got today and it got down to eight, I was excited for that, too, because it meant a little bit less presentations, but I was so, so happy to see so many people put their name forward. I don't know Christopher Ulrich and after today, I want to. I will say that you are an amazing speaker and you'll understand why I'm going to say this in a second, but I hope you do run next year for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think you'd be a great addition and number two, if you win next year, that means I don't have to run against you in two years, so there's that. But I'll be supporting Lakeisha Hayes and I didn't know that for sure coming into it. I was receiving an outpouring of emails and communications personally about Lakeisha. I was lucky enough to meet her on, on the campaign trail at many different events, at the farmer's market, at different places. And while I am blown away by Christopher's ability to talk and his, his ability to speak, I was blown away consistently by Lakeisha's ability to listen. I watched her run into situations over and over again where she was communicating with different people and her collaboration and her ability to reach through those was just amazing to me. I'll also say that I know some people will say that representative demographics don't matter, that they're looking for only the best candidate. I do think representative demographics do matter, that when people look at their city council, they should see people that look like them. But in this case, I don't have to think that because I think she's the best candidate. And being in that position is very, very comfortable for me. So I'm not going to go into everybody in detail. I do want to say thank you for coming. I think Devin, you have an amazing career ahead of you in politics and I've gotten, loved, gotten to know you as well. And I do think you, you should continue to try to make Oshkosh a great place to live, work, and play, as you keep saying. And I do want to, I want to get to know a lot of you a lot more, but I'm going to end it with there that when time comes, I'm going to be nominating and voting for Lakeisha.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Deputy Mayor Erickson's up next.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up today and sent in applications. Four years ago, I was in the same chair as you all, along with, I think, Councilmembers Esslinger and Ford. So I know it's a, it's a grueling process and the worst kind of job interview process there is, but it means a lot to step up and, and put yourself in front of that microphone and I hope that all of you, no matter the outcome, keep showing up. It does really matter and this is a tough process. We are literally and metaphorically kind of deciding who gets a seat at the table. So I know that we all are here because we care about making Oshkosh a better place for everyone. So I care about, you know, making sure that we as a council represent a wide range of backgrounds and experiences because we're making decisions that directly impact people's lives. So I'll just leave it at that, but thank you really for, for applying and showing up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Looks like Mr. Ford, followed by Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah, I'm smiling because, yeah, that was awkward as all heck when we did that. But I can tell you, if you don't get like this night, the best revenge is to just beat the crap out of the next, you know, the next election, to win. And Councilwoman Erickson, if you look at the vote total, she won handedly after that. I snuck in on her coattails.
You don't have to remind me.
There you go, man. No, thank you, everybody, obviously. I just wanted to be real, real quick. The three criteria that I look for, and I've put this out there in the world, so it shouldn't be a surprise if you, if you follow the internets, I really want someone that respects our form of government, is knowledgeable about it. We're going to be facing an important decision at some point in the next four or five years or whenever Mark decides he's sick of us and it's incredibly important that we protect that. I care a lot about nonpartisanship. It's about performance to me. We are not structured around partisanship like the state level is. We don't choose committees or things based on being a Republican or a Democrat. So I know, and I've always said, I'm usually the most unpopular person in the world, but it matters here in the room, not the world. I'm not that important. And third, I want someone that can really respect our at-large system of government here and, and understand that the diversity of our community is an asset and that we really function as a group. And one of the cons of an at-large system is we don't have. one of the cons of an at-large system is, we don't have a board-based representation, so there's always the risk that we just get seven people that all live in the same house or the same neighborhood. So, I think it is our responsibility, when we have a choice like this as a group, to pick who's serving with us, to keep the group dynamics in mind, because they absolutely do impact their performance. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I would like to echo some of the sentiments that people had up here. Thank you deeply from the bottom of my heart for coming up here and just having the courage to put your name on this application and sit up here and tell us why you think you're the best candidate. And we had a lot of good candidates. I was blown away. So, this is probably the least, like, my favorite part of the job. I'd rather be looking at ordinances or looking at land use. So, I'm ready for this vote to happen, but I think there's a few people that I thought were very qualified. Just kind of say what a few others have said. I'm looking at primarily experience, your community involvement, and then what gaps you're going to fill up here. So, that's really my criteria for what my vote will be tonight. Again, thank you for being up here, and I hope many of you run for council in the future that don't get it, because we've only got one spot. So, thank you.
If I'm doing my math right, it looks like it's up to me. First, just a huge thank you to those who applied, to those that even, that went through the process, you know, and didn't make it tonight, didn't choose to. But it's not easy. This is, and I should have maybe acknowledged it at the very beginning, but this is the most awkward interview possible, right? You get five minutes, and you're sitting next to your competitors, and you've got to do it on TV, and it's recorded. So, if it can get any more awkward, I don't know how. But you all did very well. And you all, some similar undertones, right? Active in your community, engaged, trying to be, you know, the best representative possible. Those are all things I heard from everybody. And I agree with my fellow councilmembers. I'm thankful for the group that came before us that put in applications for this. I hope to continue to see many of your names. Councilmembers Erickson and Ford are great examples of that. You know, four, five years ago, it didn't go the way they wanted it to. And as Councilmember Ford mentioned, then the very next year, one of them came and kicked my butt, and then, you know, the other ones tagging along as well still. So, I hope to see your names for boards and commissions, if you're not already serving. I'm thankful for those who do serve. It's an important way, and it's a good way to get to know your city government if you're already not serving, to know how we process, how we, how we, how we go about just trying to, you know, do the business of the city. But really, in the end, I just, I'm looking for someone who truly wants to make Oshkosh a better place to live, to work, and to play, at their core. I'm not a fan of partisanship, as Councilmember Ford alluded to, if you've been paying attention. That's going to come as no surprise that I say that. It's about doing what's best for this entire community, all four corners and everything in between, and trying to do that every single day. And it's tough sometimes. But those are the things I'm looking for, as well as, it's diversity of thought for me, and that's formed through life experiences. I look up here, I look at our current council makeup. I think one of our, one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, the gaps that are filled. That's important for me. I don't need, you know, I don't need another, if we have a gap here, I want that filled. I want that voice. I want that idea. I want that thought process up here, because that's important. So, with that, those will be my final comments. I want to thank you again for applying. Next steps up, we'll open up nominations. No second needed. Everybody has the same chance. You can just give names, and then what we'll do is, we'll go into a round of voting for those nominated, and we'll proceed through the process from there. After the vote, after we, as long as we make a decision, what will happen is, once someone gets four votes, we'll go through a procedural matter to update our resolution. At that point, once we've completed that task, we'll end up taking a short break to allow for that person to be sworn in, take their seat, allow the room to clear possibly, if you'd like to, but just giving a heads up on the next few steps of the process. So, with that, nominations are open. Mr. Esslinger has it first, and then Mr. Beulah right after that.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what I'm going to do here is, I think there are three people that I think rise to the level of being nominated. Now, I know all three of them, obviously, aren't going to make it, but I just, I guess maybe kind of for the record, as it were, that I think there, in my opinion, I think there are three people that I think would be very deserving of this chair. So, and to be honest with you, I don't even know which one I'm voting for yet, but I just think these three people deserve to get to the next level. So, with that being said, I would like to nominate Ms. Meredith Sherman, Ms. Devin Hudak, and Mr. Christopher Ulrich.
All right. Mr. Beulah, you're up next.
Spoiler alert. I will nominate Lakeisha Hayes.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Mr. Ford? Any other nominations? Final time. Any other nominations from council? All right. I think I do need a motion and a second to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'm sorry. Could you tell me the motion? I don't know the sound of the question yet.
I think it was Paul Mike. Did I get that right?
What's that?
For the motion and the second.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, we're moving into the voting part fast on you now. Any discussion on that? If none, when you're ready, take the roll on closing nominations.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beulah?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. So, next up, City Clerk will poll the members on who they wish to vote for. These will be among Ms. Sherman, Ms. Hudak, Mr. Ulrich, Mr. Bellicorelli, and Ms. Hoz. Amongst those five, that's who will be voting for. First one to four turns a seat on council. When you're ready, City Clerk, if you'll call the roll for the first round of voting.
Esslinger.
Sherman.
Erickson.
Hayes.
Ford.
Hayes.
Stevenson.
Hayes.
Beulah.
Hayes.
Mugrower.
Hayes.
Hayes has five.
Hayes has five. Thank you, City Clerk. So, at that point, I now need, where is it in here?
A motion to amend the resolution.
There we go. I need a motion to amend the resolution appointing Lakeisha Hayes as the next council member to fill the vacancy.
Still moved.
Second. Carl and Paul. When you're ready, if you'll take the roll on that vote.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beulah?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Carried six.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hayes, you've been, you've been elected to the board.
Mayor, we still need a vote.
I'm sorry. Sorry, hold on. Sorry, sorry.
We still need a vote on the appointment as amended.
My apologies. See, I knew I was going to make a mistake tonight. So, that was the motion as amended. Now, we've got to go to the full vote.
Right.
The full...
We'll be done in a half an hour.
The full, 28 minutes tops, I swear. All right. So, if there's no, is there any other discussion on the motion as amended? Thank you for correcting me over there. If there's no discussion, if you'll take the vote on the motion as amended.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beulah?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Carried six.
Now, Ms. Hayes. And can we get one more round for all the candidates that put their...
Absolutely.
It is about 7:40. We're going to take a brief recess. We're going to keep it to five minutes. Hopefully, Ms. Hayes, we've got some procedural things for the City Clerk to do, and then you'll take your seat this evening right away. To all others, again, thank you for going through this process. Thank you for making a good and in-depth process, and wish you the best of luck, and hope to see your names very shortly. Thank you. Brief recess, about five minutes.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Newly appointed, Councilmember Lakeisha Hayes has been sworn in and taken her seat up here, so we now have a full seven. So, congratulations, Councilwoman. Before we move on to the business in front of us, we do have another presentation, but I do just want to thank council very quickly for the process this evening, the respectful tone, and just your overall process to try to make it as good of an outcome as possible, having gone through two of them now. Just want to say thank you to my fellow councilmembers up here for going through that exercise with us and making it as good as possible. With that, Finance Director Van Gompel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have just a quick introduction to help set the table for our presentation today. We have Mr. Harry Allen, who is with Ellers and Associates. And Harry has worked with the City of Oshkosh in the last couple of debt issuance. And there was a little bit of confusion on the electronic packet, so I'm going to refer to a page number, but I think it's in there twice. What we have tonight under presentations, for each debt issuance, we are contemplating, we do a pre-sale report, and Harry's going to go through, and Mr. Allen's going to go through and talk about that. But we have actually three pre-sale reports as part of your packet. They're not in the order that you're going to be considering them. Just to help set the table, we have a pre-sale report for issuance 2023- Series A, which is a general obligation debt. In order to issue general obligation debt, the city has to do an initial resolution. That's on the resolution schedule, further on your agenda. But we also have issuance 2023B, which is for stormwater, excuse me, for, yeah, for stormwater, and 2023 with Series C, which is... and 2023 with Series C, which is for water utility. Typically, we would have three different utilities, one for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. But we are not issuing debt in 2023 for our sanitary sewer capital improvements that were approved last fall as part of our capital improvement plan. When we looked at the cash balance for our sanitary sewer fund, we have adequate cash on hand, so we will not be issuing debt. We are not recommending issuance of debt for capital projects. We've reduced the amount of financing that was included in the capital improvement plan for water and stormwater, so we're not issuing as much debt as we talked to the city council about last fall for our capital improvement projects. And Harry can talk about that, so we're using some cash for our sanitary sewer and our water utility, so we don't have to rely so much on debt. And I can talk about the general obligation debt if there's further questions later. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Allen, just to walk through the pre-sale, walk through the timeline, because we're going to follow the similar timeline with the general obligation debt and the utility. But there is no resolution needed this evening for the utility debt, but we just want you to be informed of the process as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Allen and have him just kind of cover the pre-sale reports for you real quick.
Perfect. Thank you, Russ. So, as Russ did a really great job covering everything I was going to cover, but to fill in a few different spots, normally, the city every year issues the three utility bonds, and then there's also two general obligation issues typically, notes that are structured over 10 years and bonds over 20 years. And that has to do with specific state statutes, you can only put certain things into bonds, so the rest is financed in notes. But last year, the city issued a larger issue of notes than normal to take advantage of the lower interest rate environment. So there's less borrowing needing to happen this year, and it all is bond-eligible. So that's why we're just doing the bonds and no notes this year. So I'll start with the GO bonds, and then just move from A, B to C. So in your packet, I believe it's page 712 is the GO bonds. Just a few notes here. We typically structure the debt service as level debt service, we're keeping that assumption this year. The interest rate that we're showing in our pre-sales is 3.84%. Current market is around 3.5%, so hopefully when we sell these later on, at the end of May, we're looking at around the same of that 3.8% or maybe a touch lower. The debt burden at the end of 2023 is estimated to be around 45% of the state limit for debt, which is 5% of your TID and equalized value. And so that's under the goal that council had set by 2030 to be under that 50% of your debt limit, so you're looking really good there. I think this will be the first year that you guys dip back under that 50%, so looking great on that front. The net levy estimated for next year for debt is anticipated to go up, but not more than the existing structure of the outstanding debt. So we're adding around 450,000 of additional debt, but outside of that, the big jump we're seeing next year was from existing debt, so the new debt isn't piling on too much there. That's it on the GO bonds, so I'll just keep moving on to the storm bonds. So as Russ had mentioned, the borrowing for the storm bonds this year is being offset by cash. So there's a $9.8 million cash contribution to the capital improvement projects for this year, because there's a lot of cash in that stormwater utility, so it's a way to spend that down and offset some of the interest expenses that go along with borrowing money. And with the storm bonds, whenever you issue utility debt, it's backed by the utility revenues, not general obligation, not like the property tax of the city. And so there are different requirements as to what those revenues need to be at. So with the stormwater, it's 1.2 times of your net revenues of that utility for every dollar debt service, so you need $1.20 of revenues for a dollar debt service. Right now, in that pre-sale report, we do show some years don't make coverage. We're hoping once we get 2022 numbers, all years will make coverage. If they don't, we'll adjust the structure, or we'll revisit the total issuance amount. But for now, we're chugging forward with that $6.1 million issuance and hoping the 2022 numbers are where we expect them to be. With that one, the storm bonds are rated just a touch lower than the city's general obligation debt, so on an interest rate, we modeled that around 4.3%, so it's a little bit more expensive on that side. Moving on to the water bonds, these also have a cash offset. This is page 703 of your packet. $3.6 million of cash is being used to offset the capital improvement borrowing, so that brings you a net issuance of $7.4 million for this year. This also has a coverage requirement, the same 1.2. The good news here is that even with the 2021 financials, you meet coverage in every single year, and we anticipate that to be the case with 2022. So we're good on the revenue side for the water bonds. These are also structured with level debt service. The water bonds have the same rating as the city's general obligation bonds, but sometimes we do see utility debt price a little bit higher than general obligation, so these are estimated around 4.19%. And then the last thing I wanted to cover was, the city has taken a different process with the issuance of debt this year, and they're doing what's known as a parameters resolution. So what this means is that on, I think it's May 25th, there will be three resolutions before you. And instead of having what before would be an initial resolution and a final resolution, the parameters resolution will set certain parameters that if they're met on the day of sale, designated city staff can accept that bid on behalf of the council. So the council only takes one action. And we're anticipating those to come before you on May 25th and having the sale on May 31st. With that, I will open it up for any questions anybody has for me.
Before we have questions, just a closing statement. Last year was the first time we did this parameters resolution. Otherwise, if you were on council before, we would have the sale occur on a city council day. And sometimes that's not advantageous to award a sale on that day based on market conditions, based on who else is going to the market. So we found, and it was very successful last year, that if we gave you the parameters in that resolution, and we actually did the closing on a day that was advantageous to the city as far as a lower interest rate, and based on who's in the market and what's happening with the Federal Reserve and interest rates, that we might schedule the closing to happen on a different date. We're scheduling that to happen in June, and again, it's dependent on all of those parameters falling into play. So there are some protections there, so if they're not there, we don't close.
Yeah, the example I'd use is, think about city councils throughout the country. So many meet on Tuesdays. I've been doing this 40 years. Every one of my council meetings for 40 years has been on Tuesday nights. To bid it out on a day like a Thursday just makes it less competitive, so people are more willing to bid. And that's, the parameters resolution's been a new phenomenon that's, I think, worked out very well for us.
Councilmember Beal?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentations, Russell and Mr. Allen. You talked about that there would be approved buyers. Is that going to be something that we talk about at the May 25th meeting, or do you already know who the approved buyers and decision-makers are?
The bonds will be sold on a competitive basis, so we won't know the purchaser of the bonds until the day of the sale.
I think he means staff.
Yeah, who is the city, that staff-wise makes that decision that day. Is that something that we talk about?
The city manager and the finance director will both have to approve the sale.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, but just wanted to clarify.
No problem.
He speaks Carl.
Other questions from council? No, if there's not, as always, I always appreciate the presentations. It's always good to know our financial position. Knowing where interest rates are going, it's a huge driver of our budgets, and I like the idea of what we did last year and continuing that in terms of giving you that leeway of when you think is the best day to pull the trigger, so appreciate that.
And I think the other thing, because the discussion when the council approved the 6.25% stormwater increase, that was obviously something that everybody was very concerned about. And we pledged at that time that we were going to use our reserves very aggressively to, number one, draw that amount down, because we had, we have a very healthy fund balance, and we don't need that much money. So we were going to borrow less, and so we're borrowing about $9 million less as a result of that. And I think that that's going to lower our debt service, so that you'll see that reflected in future years. And I think the sheets that Perry was pointing out, if you take a look at the sewer, or the storm sewer bonds, they're going to be, it's going to be less debt service because we're using that 9 million, right?
Correct. Just, Mr. Manager, just the refresh and for the public's information, the 9.7, 9.8 million dollars in cash is for stormwater. We're using about $7.5 million in cash from our sanitary sewer fund, so we have no debt going forward in 2023. That we talked about possibly having a debt issuance last year when we did our capital improvement plan. And then for water utility, we're using about $3.6 million of cash. And those are all planned cash purchases that initially were going to be issuance of debt, but because of the funds being in strong positions, it's our recommendation, we don't have to issue debt for that. So we always are looking at that, and I think for council, when we did the workshop on our CIP last fall, we spent a little bit of time, Long Range Finance talked about this debt management policy that we adopted, that you adopted as council, to set up the parameters. We're trying to get to 50%, as Harry talked about, 50% of our legal debt limit. Right now, we're at 50.84 with this new issuance, and with some assumptions on equalized growth this year, we're looking at that being as possibly as low as 46% of our legal debt limit. We can issue debt up to 5% of our total equalized value, but our policy says, and we talked about this at Long Range Finance, our max is 70%, we're trying to move that down a little bit, and Long Range Finance wanted to look at that on kind of a year-by-year basis, but our goal, our goal is to get to 50% or less.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, you're talking about bonds and notes, bonds 20-year and notes 10. Can you briefly, just what's the difference in what the requirements and the interest rate difference, if any, on those issuances?
Right now, we're in a weird interest rate environment, so short-term debt is more expensive than kind of that medium-term debt. So notes and bonds aren't incredibly different at this point. But you do achieve interest savings if you pay debt off quicker. One of the things we look at with bonds is, if you have a road that you're putting in, and that road lasts for 20 years, people using that road for the 20 years that road exists should pay for the road. So it's a way of making projects more equitable and stretching that out, so that who uses it pays for it at the same time. But as far as interest rate, yeah, you save interest if you pay debt off quicker, but it comes to, does it fit into keeping the debt service level year over year, and does it make sense from an equitability standpoint?
So it's a depreciation-type issue then, or how long something depreciates?
Maybe, if I could just interject real quick. I think, if I understand the question correctly, councilmember, mostly, and I'm going to use some general terms, mostly like buildings and some public safety, like fire equipment, we can do bonds for, but other street equipment, we can only do notes. And we actually, on some of our equipment, we amortize even shorter than the 10-year that we can under notes. So we take a look at the underlying project that's being funded. I can tell you, if you have a question on a specific project based on our capital improvement plan, whether that falls on our bond or notes, but in general, buildings and libraries and fire equipment and public safety things are eligible for bonds, but it's like street equipment and some of those things are just eligible for notes, just to answer the question.
Got it, yep, got it.
Yeah, it's all outlined in statute. So bond council makes a final decision on what can be put over that 20 years or what can be over 10 years. It's all detailed in the statute.
We also have, correct me if I'm wrong, but have served with you a little bit, and we've worked on Long Range Finance, but we've also got some policies in place that we won't take out loans for longer than the useful life. Where we're used to at times do that, but now it's, and so depending on the project like he was alluding to, if it's got a shorter lifespan, we're going to take on shorter debt. If it's got a long lifespan, we have the option then at least.
Mr. Mayor, so in addition to our debt policy, Long Range Finance has also done a, and we talk about this with our capital improvement planning process, we have an estimated useful life for our other equipment, and we will match the amortization of the debt to our equipment.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation this evening, and we're hoping for strong numbers on the day of sale, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Next up, citizen statements to council. I don't have anybody registered. If there's anybody in the public that wants to speak yet this evening, now is the time or forever hold your peace. All right, moving on to consent agendas. I'll take a motion and second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Stevenson.
I'd like to make a motion to pull out item 11.
Nope, you can just pull 11.
Okay.
Cool, yep. Any other? All right. Any discussion on any consent agendas? Seeing none, if the clerk will take the role on consent, minus number 11, resolution 23182.
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Asim.
And Mugurauer?
Aye.
Period six.
Back to laid, pulled out, resolution 23182, motion and a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. You can just take it if you want.
Sure. I guess, since I brought it up, I'll discuss it, but planning, is it planning director, community development director? Is that their proper title? Do you maybe just want to give a background on this first, and then maybe I'll follow up with a few questions that I have or concerns?
Absolutely. And we also have Assistant City Manager John Fitzpatrick here, who does lead facilities, the division. The city has been looking for additional storage facilities in the community due to the requirements for elections with the Clerk's Department. Police has some needs, museum does, so they've been looking around the community for different locations where they could store items. And there was one building in the central city along Jefferson and Irving, and city staff had worked with John's group, and they moved forward with submitting an offer to purchase it. It went through Plan Commission last week, and it was approved, and we're here today just for final approval for the acquisition.
So then, I'll give a little bit on, so I was, I brought this up to Mark a little bit. I'm a little concerned about the acquisition here, and I think it primarily stems from the look of the building right now, so it is not the prettiest building. It probably, if we wanted to build this now, we would probably not allow it. It's like a standing seam. I think that's one of our lower-class materials. So the idea that we're going to acquire this for storage, and then it might become a permanent fixture within our, what I view as like our downtown growth corridor next to a very, a part that I think we want to develop. So one, I'd like to hear, is there any implications that this is maybe going to shrink a development that could happen there, if there's any potential on that? Or two, is there a way that if this does become kind of our permanent storage home, that we can kind of make this blend into the neighborhood?
Sure, absolutely. You are correct. To the south of this, the RDA has been acquiring properties for about 15 years now, and we actually are working on an RFP to bring to the RDA to try to propose a development on the site and attract a developer. So with that in mind, those were some comments that were brought up by Plan Commission members. You are correct, it wouldn't be able to be built the way it is now. So we are looking at options to somewhat improve the aesthetics and the look of the building and the parking lot. Some of those ideas are, you know, replace the siding, or put a knee wall in at least, you know, maybe with some sort of brick. Right now, the parking lot goes all the way to the sidewalk, so maybe put in some landscaping or take out a few spots just to soften those edges a little bit, put some of the foundation landscaping along the building too. And of course, we want to make sure it's safe, so if there's any lighting requirements or anything like that, we can certainly look at that. But city staff is very willing to work with. to work with, and our Community Development Department work with facilities to make sure that the building, you know, looks nice and is compatible with hopefully our future development in that area.
And I think Mr. Fitzpatrick has, you know, talked to Mr. Urban, our General Services Manager, who addresses these issues. We need to be good neighbors in that neighborhood, and we got to, if we're putting these requirements on business, we ought to be putting it on ourselves. So, you have my word that we're going to be working on these things, and Kelly and her staff, who have to impose these same standards on other properties, she's going to make sure Fitz and Urban do their job and do it as well. Well, yeah, just keep nodding, John, that's all we need. Russ, yeah? If I may, just from a financials point of view, when we did our capital improvement plan last fall, and we identified projects, we had actually two projects rolled into one. One was a storage building for our police department on Third, and then another one was a storage for the Clerk's Office, the museum, and some other city functions. And at the time we did this, we were anticipating about a million-dollar project to build a new building, and I was, had some discussions with our Administrative Services Division, and we were looking for vacant property that could be acquired at a slightly reduced rate than constructing a new building. So, this is rolled into the debt financing, but I've worked with Administrative Services to develop a budget that would be significantly less than the million dollars to construct a new building, even if we were to do some of these other improvements to the site in the building as well. So, what you have today is, on the agenda is the purchase of the building at 277, but we also have a budget put together to try to make some improvements to the site, which will be substantially less than the one million dollars for the new construction.
Councilmember Bulo, and then followed by Councilmember Esslinger.
Actually, it sounds like he pretty much spoke to my concern, so I talked to City Manager Roloff today, wanted to ensure that we were aggressive in negotiating that price, because I understood that it had no bids other than us, and we went back and forth, it sounds like, a couple times to get a good price on the property. My question was going to be, do we have it outlined on the cost it's going to take to get this used ready for us? Understand there's going to be three different bays put in. Am I correct on that, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, yes. And as Russ just described, I think we discussed it maybe two or three days ago, we had an estimated cost of about $100,000 that we wanted to invest, I believe, in terms of, as Mark said and as Kelly said, to make sure that we're setting the standard. If we're setting the standard, we have to walk the walk.
So, that includes external and internal improvements that would be needed to make it?
Right now, that's our estimated cost.
I think there was some additional discussion on what type of improvements have to be done with the parking lot, and whether that will roll into the budget. But I think, I'm comfortable with the 100 to maybe almost $200,000 when you figure in the parking lot on top of this purchase price. So, like I said, it'd still be substantially less than a million dollars we planned for the new, a new building.
And how long would, do you anticipate that this would future-proof us for in terms of storage? Like, are we going to, I know sometimes, like, I think I get a new closet, I'm going to have to, you know, get another one in a couple weeks because I'll fill it up.
I think, I think it'll serve us well, because we're going to have multiple departments in there. Not only are we going to have clerks, but also we have some police stuff there, we have electric there. So, there's a variety of different people that are going to be located there, and I think there's enough space. It really actually fits our needs quite well. You had the other departments tour the site, and, you know, anytime we can reuse a property, that's something we're always looking to do in the community too, and try to do it cost-effectively without disrupting any other plans that we might have to develop.
Thank you.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. John, maybe I missed it here, but how did we, was this building listed? Yes. It was, and so what was the, what was the asking price, and how did we negotiate that? Yeah, I think the asking price was 325, and I think we settled on a final price of 277.
Typical back and forth that you have with that.
So, you just had amendments on the price then?
Back and forth, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Sure.
This checks a couple boxes. We obviously have storage needs. We've got some facility work that we're doing at Sawyer Street, got to move some things out of there. It's centrally located. And not only is it a financial savings, which is always a good thing for me, it only actually helps us in the long term in terms of development of that block, because if something, something comes along and we needed that space, we own it. And in the future, if we need it, that's an easier thing than trying to acquire it from an unwilling seller. So, I know City Manager Roloff is smiling at me.
Because we'll tell Fitz to get out.
Right, because we can then, you know, in the future, if needed, it's ours to own in that, more of that block is now under our control. So, it's, I think it's a win-win, and appreciate you guys getting creative on some solutions here, so good work.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion?
I would just add one other thing, because Councilmember Stevenson and I had this conversation. Because we have a neighborhood associate in that area, as we talk about different improvements, it might be good to just run it by them, just get some input from them as well. I think we got to, we got to be good neighbors for this type of thing. It's close to the downtown, it's close to residential area, and I think we owe it to everybody to be good, to be good neighbors.
That's a good point I actually did mean to bring up. We've worked through the, with the surrounding community on Sawyer Street, with the Fire Training Center, the Fire Tower, and that was a council directive that we had to be good neighbors. We had to make sure that this site was as pleasing as possible to the eye, and that we were as good neighbors as possible, and I expect nothing less from you guys on this project as well. So, with that, if there's no other comment, if you'll take the role on 23-182.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Hayes. Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, now we're dropping down to pending ordinances. Ordinance 23-209, repeal and recreate Chapter 4, Article 4 pertaining to alcohol beverages, issuance of operator licenses. I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff, I understand the mechanisms here, and I think this is a good idea, can kind of speed up the process here a little bit. The question I have is, if someone comes in and they do want a liquor license, and I think we're, you know, kind of, the timing here is important, and for whatever reason, they are denied that license through this process, how would that person, or could that person then come to a council member and say, "I was denied, I want this to go"? Would it automatically come to the council then? Or how would that work?
I just want to clarify one thing. This is only about the operator's license, bartender's license.
Yes.
So, that individual typically, when, under the current system, we say, you know, "We're not going to recommend it because of this issue." And usually, it's something that's less than complimentary towards that person, probably something on a criminal record or something. So, they typically, I'm just telling you from experience, they typically just back off and just, just give up on it. With this process, they have that same right, except they can go, "I want to appeal to council," and we, we bring it forward, and they have to, you know, their dirty laundry will be aired, and the chief is, you know, prepared to do that. But I think they have good conversations with these individuals and explain to them why they're recommending no. So, this person, they have those, those, really what it becomes down to is now appeal rights. Is that a fair assessment, Amy Biggs?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, maybe to make it a little clearer. So, if I wanted to, I was going to get a job at whatever, whatever place, fill in blank, and it came to the staff, and they said, "No," and I was going to start on Friday, and this came to the staff on Tuesday, "I'm starting on Friday, I was just denied, now I can't come to the council for a couple weeks." You know, is there some type of process?
That's a system that exists right now, but again, I don't think the bar-
But don't you have to have that in a couple weeks beforehand? I mean, so you would know then, for the process that we have now, you know that that's going, that is going to be a two-week process, or is it, is it, maybe I'm missing something, is it changing that process?
It's not changing that part of the process. All it is, is allowing us to issue a license earlier rather than later, because sometimes that situation you described is happening, and they're like, and we say, "Well, you have to wait for the next council meeting."
Yeah.
And it's like, "Yeah, but I'm starting the job." It's really more about starting the job. Somebody's opening up a bar, they're going to have multiple bartenders. So, one person's operator's license isn't going to make or break it, but if this person's job depends on it, they typically are going through the process with the Clerk's Office, and then that goes through police. That person, if there's an issue, we're going to raise it sooner rather than later. Is that a fair assessment, Chief Smith?
Yes, specifically with, with an applicant for the bartender's license. If, if in fact there's something that comes up in the background investigation that we do, we have conversation with them. We let them know, hey, these are issues that you have. But to specifically to your question, if they, as an example, if they applied for a job as a bartender at a tavern last week, and they didn't get opportunity to have their license come before council, the statute does provide that as long as there's a licensed bartender on premise, they can, they can work.
Right.
So, it won't preclude them from working.
Right. Do we, if I want to get a liquor license, if I come down and apply for a liquor license, are we given any materials out saying, "If you've been convicted of a felony, you're likely not going to pass our criteria"? I mean, do we give them that information?
In the, in the application process, there are specific yes or no questions. And again, this is on operator's licenses, so there's specific questions related to violation of Chapter 4, related to underage, underage serving, if you received any, any violations for, marry out of different alcohol violations, any felonies, things like that. And there's also specific prohibitions within the code against any discriminatory practices related to anything else that wasn't included in this.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bulo.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Esslinger, for your, for your questions. As somebody who currently owns, or possesses an operator's license, and someone who has managed bartenders and operators over the years, I could not support this strongly enough, especially at an event space where you have 75 bartenders trying to get their license really, really quick for, you know, maybe there's an EAA event coming up or something, having a process streamlined like this, so they don't have to use either temporary operator permits or not be able to operate the bar because it took longer. I can't support this strongly enough.
In all fairness, I want to give credit to our Clerk's Office, both Jesse and Sabrina, our Deputy Clerk, they're the ones who made the suggestion. So, the idea was to do exactly what Councilmember Bulo is talking about, making it better for the, in this case, the customer who, who have, all they want is a bartender license to get a job.
No, a huge thanks to city staff. It's always nice when, when we're getting things right from staff in terms of efficiencies, improving the process, making it easier. That's, that's what we're supposed to be trying to do, and this does just that. I don't take it lightly that, you know, we do give away a little bit of our, you know, our authority, but this is a good way to do it. This is an administrative process already, and we were really just rubber-stamping it. And so, in this case, hugely supportive of it, and thank you for all the efforts to keep improving the process. So, if no other comments, if you'll take the role on 23-209.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next up, pending ordinance 23-210, approve amendment to comprehensive land use plan maps, changing the land designation of properties located along the southern intersection of North Kohler Street and Oshkosh Avenue, from light-density residential to neighborhood commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If Ms. Nyforth wouldn't mind coming up. Only reason I'd like you to give us a little, a little brief, brief on this one is, we don't do this very often. It does have an impact on land use and future home sales and things like that a little bit, so if you wouldn't mind just talking about what we're doing and why we're trying to do it.
Sure. This is the Oshkosh Avenue redevelopment area. As you drive out there, you see it's very different than it was even five, 10 years ago. So, we've had a lot of inquiries from other commercial developers looking to develop along Oshkosh Avenue. So, to, you know, wanting to proactively look at the area to ensure that, you know, where developers are looking, where it is appropriate for them to develop there, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings in the area and looked at the, you know, the land that was existing, the setbacks from single-family homes, you know, to the south or to the north of them, just to see where it maybe it would make sense for additional neighborhood commercial development. So, the area that you see in your packet is the area that we really did kind of key in on, close to that Keller area, and there's a new bank in that area. In those areas, the lots are large enough to support perhaps, you know, a commercial development, but at the same time, it has enough room to buffer the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's what we really want to make sure we're doing, is protecting those neighborhoods in that area. But at the same time, if the market is, you know, pushing for more commercial in the area, we want to be prepared for that. So, the comprehensive plan amendment is just that. It's not our zoning code. So, this is just looking ahead into the future. So, this means right now, if somebody has a parcel that is included in this area, their zoning won't change. You know, from an assessment standpoint, everything else, nothing changes. It's just really looking ahead into the future to proactively prepare for potential future development that might come in that area.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Ford.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this, I really like this. I think it's very forward-thinking, and I'm glad you guys are kind of doing that. I'm glad you're looking at these corridors and really taking the initiative instead of being reactive or being very proactive. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Agreed. This was feedback that Plan Commission gave you, and we always get accused of Plan Commission of not thinking proactively. And this was a very specific example of you all thinking very proactively, so, well done.
Mr. Esslinger.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you for saying Keller correctly.
Well, that's a big controversy in the city, isn't it?
No, there is no controversy. It's Keller.
We hear all sorts, but yes.
If there's no other comment, if the clerk will take role on 23-210.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried seven.
New ordinances. Ordinance 23-211, approve zone change from heavy industrial use, heavy industrial district to heavy industrial district with a planned development overlay. For property located at 2665 Oregon Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. We'll be taking no action on that, seeing this is the first reading of that one. Ordinance 23-212, create Section 2-56C pertaining to compensation for Board of Review members. Staff recommends adoption on first reading. I'll need a motion and a second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
I'll make that motion to waive the rules to adopt on first reading.
I will second. Any discussion on waiving the rules? If not, when you're ready, you can take the role.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 23-212, create Section 2-56C pertaining to compensation of Board of Review members. Motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Carl won the race on that one.
That's only because he looked over at me first to see if I was going to buzz it. So, my questions would be, how did we come up with the $15 per hour, and then would it be more wise to do a flat fee like I know many other boards and commissions for like county board, per se?
I think this goes back to the uncertainty over the length of the meetings for the Board of Review. It can be as short as a boring two hours, because by law, the Board of Review has to be there for a minimum of two hours. But if they suddenly get a long list of folks, they literally could be there all day.
Or days.
Or, yeah, very well-put, days. So, I'm not sure, I mean, Mr. Fitzpatrick was coming up because it was kind of a personnel pay issue, but just, we've been paying these folks $5 an hour for like 30 years, and I think we got to at least get up to the, you know, the 2020s.
In my understanding, these meetings are typically during the business day, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
Is this enough?
We'll find out. I think the mayor just appointed somebody tonight to the Board of, Board of Review. We're having a challenge with members right now. I don't think necessarily it's the money issue, the time issue, because there are people who, who have to say, it's almost like the equivalent of jury duty.
Sure.
It's like, well, I got jury duty next week. I may be in tomorrow, or I may not be. And you just don't know. And if we have a boring two hours, then they're done, and And if we have a boring two hours, then they're done and jury duty's over, but something bad happens and the trial goes on for days, and literally, it's a trial and tribulation. When it goes long, it can be very exhausting. So is 15 enough? I would say it's at least acknowledging something more current, but it's pretty much been a minimum wage type of job. It's just that we haven't changed it in 30 years.
Sure. Ms. Esslinger.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely correct, Mr. Roloff. In fact, I think the $15 an hour might have to be reviewed at the end of the year because the people that are on, that do this are, you know, they're usually pretty highly paid individuals, and for $15 an hour, we're getting a very good bargain.
Well, thankfully, this is public service as well, right? They don't get into it for the money.
Speak for yourself.
It's also good to note, just for at least a little bit of transparency, this is the only order commission that has the potential to receive pay. It's allowed by statute, right? And just due to the unique nature of it could take a whole day or longer, the uniqueness is what drives that, that maybe we should consider that. So I just appreciate you guys bringing it up and just bring at least the pay to be a more relevant number if it's going to matter to somebody. So, if there's no other comments or questions, take the roll on 23-212.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 23-213, establish no parking west Ripple Avenue, south side from Oregon Street to Red Oak Court. No action will be taken this evening. And ordinance 23-214, extend no parking during school hours on Smith Avenue to 4:00 PM south side. Again, no action planned this evening. On to new resolutions. Resolution 23-215, bear with me as I read through this. Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the public purposes of street improvements in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,355,000. Constructing police facilities in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,095,000. Fire engines and other equipment of the fire department and for construction of engine houses and for pumps, water mains, reservoirs, and all other reasonable facilities for the fire protection apparatus or equipment for fire protection buildings, for the housing of machinery and equipment in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $785,000. Acquiring, constructing, improving libraries in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $560,000. And parking lots and other parking facilities in aggregate principal amount not to exceed I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion on 23-215? Seeing none, take the roll.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Hayes.
Present.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 23-216, approve TID 43 development agreements and lease agreements with the Mill on Main PH1 LLC, the Mill on Main PH2 LLC, and the Mill on Main PH3 LLC for property located along the east side of South Main Street between Ninth Avenue and the Fox River. Motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments, questions on this? Councilmember Ford is up first.
I'll just say, nice job negotiating. I mean, this is really, I know that we, our tits are always pay-as-you-go, so that's good, with the phased-in approach, that gives us some protection, and then having some of those incentives to make sure we get the project completed, because I think we're all in agreement, that's what matters more than anything. So, well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
This is a cool project, that's it.
I agree.
Mr. Stevenson's corrected, it's a very cool project. It's, as a south sider by birth and long, and forever, for a south sider, I guess, having seen where that area was, I bowled there at the rec lanes, you know, from practically birth on, basically, or I lived there with my family, and it's just cool to see what's coming of that area. It's going to be a linchpin for that, for the rest of that development, of course. It's a big one. I appreciate, you know, along with Councilmember Ford, the work staff put into this one in regards to getting this development agreement into a place that gave us enough comfort for seeing all phases through. That's a big deal. We want the whole project. I love the whole thing, and this helps us get there. So, once again, nice work and appreciate all the efforts. If there's nothing else, take the roll on 23-216.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Hayes.
Present.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 23-217, establish rate of compensation for members of the Board of Review.
Move it.
Second.
Any further discussion on the topic? When ready, take the roll.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. So next up, future agenda items, we have a TIF presentation, Scarlet Hotel Group, that's the formerly Best Western.
Yes, they're planning to make a presentation potentially requesting TIF funding.
For new council members, we've asked in the very recent past to have those who may be seeking a TIF from the city to come present to us in a council meeting, present their project a little bit, tell us about it, give us a chance to ask some questions before we'd have anything in closed session. So this is just kind of a preview for us to hear about the project and ask some questions in an open setting, so. Review of mayor and council salaries. This is pro forma that we put this on here, right?
Yes, the council adopted a resolution about eight years ago that said, after the election of the mayor, and they just did it that way, just to have a typical schedule that the council staff to bring back, if the council wants us to take a look at council salaries, you must adopt, if you're going to change council salaries, you must do it before essentially December 1st, before anybody can take out papers. So, sort of like a job advertisement, think of it that way. You know what the job's advertising for. You cannot change your salary right here, right now. It has to be done prior to you even taking out papers for office. So the idea behind doing it now was that if the council chose to look at it, they would have sufficient time to review it, and if they wanted it to take effect with the next election, that would, it would be, there'd be ample time for you to review it. Typically, if you do it, a couple council members form a subcommittee. In this case, because it's a pay issue, HR staff works with you, and then if you make a recommendation, you come back to council. So I'm just perfunctory, putting it on the agenda. I know that the last time, the council didn't want to do anything, but it's your prerogative.
You don't have to make a, go ahead, Ms. Esslinger.
Maybe for the legal department, so if the council decided they wanted to increase the salary or salaries of the mayor or council members, wouldn't it have to be in two years that those, because you could be increasing your own salary then? So, I mean, if I voted for it tonight, I will be here next year.
You'd have to wait. You'd have to wait that year. You are correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's, so it would be implemented in 2025 then?
It would be implemented in 2024 for the people taking office in 2024, and for the people in 2025, it would be done effective in 2025. There's also another way to do it. You could also say that the people getting elected in 2024, their pay is identical to it is right now, and then a year in, then it would be concurrent with the people elected in 2025. You really have the option to do what you want, but the idea is you got to get it done because you're right, you just can't, the people who just got elected wouldn't be able to change their salary midterm.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Beal.
The only thing I'll say is, we had eight applicants for one position tonight. We'd be out of our dang minds to consider raising the salaries of council.
Maybe we could do like a two-tiered system for like second-term people to get paid for it. Just throw it out there, it might be legally problematic.
Nay.
No, I, don't touch it. I'm not hearing a consensus.
Mr. Stevenson, you have the floor.
Is this, I know it's on future agenda items, but is this something we even want to bring to a future agenda? I mean...
This is for us to at least give, if we want to give direction, we can, otherwise this just dies. If four of us aren't shaking our heads saying yes, bring it back, it won't be brought back.
I don't want it brought back. I guess it's where my stance is.
There's just one thing that I think we should take a look at, and I talked to Mr. Roloff on this, and that's the position of deputy mayor. The deputy mayor makes the same salary as a council person, but that person does have more responsibilities, has to work with Mr. Roloff quite a bit.
Are you saying they should be paid more just because of that?
I really do think, I mean, what is the council's $5,000 and mayor's $6,500? Is it?
Yeah.
I think that's...
Okay. That's correct.
I mean, I think, you know, if you have more responsibilities, you can be paid more. So I think increasing the salary of the deputy mayor, $500, I don't think is crazy, is it? Am I crazy, or?
What we can do, and I don't want to cut you off.
Put it on the next agenda.
Well, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I know two years ago, completed the review, or I think he gained some information, and we just decided not to proceed with anything. At the least, if you'd like, he can present that information from two years ago. It's still going to be relatively relevant, if that's a term I can use, and I just did, I guess. So maybe if even just seeing that information first, and then it can always be a future agenda item, if after that you like something, we can put it on.
Okay.
Sure.
Happy to do that. We'll put it on the next agenda.
Carl, Mr. Beal, did you need anything?
I'm fine with that. The only thing I was going to say is, I wanted it struck because even the optics of us talking about our own salaries just feels yucky, but I understand that if we want to have more discussion about it, I'm fine with that.
Well, we'll wait the information and then we'll proceed from there. Future agenda items are done with that. Future workshops?
Again, I've been gone for a long, long time here. I want to ask something, a future agenda item, so are we still?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I should have asked.
Mr. Roloff, when I ran, one of the things that I talked about, and it seemed to get some traction, is communication. You know, if you go on Facebook, then there's one site that I think is very popular, and that's, you know you're from Oshkosh when, you know, so that gets a lot of popularity, and so it's, every day, there seems to be, every week, there's some type of topic, like, what are they doing on Witsel? You know, we had the hay and whatever else. And so what invariably will happen is, within the fifth thread on there, it's Trump's fault, it's Biden's fault, you don't know what you're talking about, move on, who cares? It's none of your business, and it just erodes into a cesspool, okay?
Don't forget KFC.
And KFC is going to go there, right? So I think, and I think the city, we do have a communications staff person or persons. Okay, so maybe, I don't know, maybe a workshop or something? How do we, social media is an awesome place to be able to garner information, and so when we, and there are some great questions on there, you know? People ask these questions, and sometimes it's, they give false information, they don't know what they're talking about, and it's, then it goes absolutely crazy. So if we can have someone on the staff that, I'm not saying they need to go to everyone's Facebook page, but kind of monitor that and have like an actual staff person that knows what they're talking about, say, here's the answer to your question. If you have any further questions, go to the website, give me a call, whatever the case may be. So I think we can put a lot of fires out with that type of communication. And then the other thing is, I got, you know, again, this is new to me, and I expressed myself when I came in today. I'm old. And so we got a lot of emails regarding the candidates that we had for, to fill the spot here, and so we had people emailing us and then people responding to that, and it just, again, it's great, I want to hear people's opinions, but it just, we kind of get lost. And then there's people that, you know, live in wherever they live, that I don't know if they have a dog in the fight, so to speak. I know, have we done any kind of talking or studying or made some determination of how we obtain that information and what's relevant, and are there different approaches? I don't know if there's been any studies done on that, or, I mean, I want all the input, but make it easier? I don't understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, actually, staff had a recent discussion, and we talked about the concept of putting together a workshop to at least fill the council in on the different initiatives that we're doing. Andy Rattick, our communications coordinator, he has a group of different marketing, communication people throughout the organization, and they typically get together, and I think they would be more than happy to give a presentation to the council on what they're up to and get feedback, just like you're given right now, and just see what we can do to, I always say, communication is an ongoing improvement process. We always have, we always have to listen to these types of things, because sometimes it's like, oh, we tried that. Well, let's try it again. It's amazing when you change communication tools, sometimes something like, just draw the attention to it is enough to get it going, and then it wears off, and you got to do something else. You just can't, you can't lay on your, on what your recent accomplishments are, you just got to, it's constant improvement.
Do we have on Facebook now, any departments, Department of Public Works?
There are probably...
I think the police is the most popular.
Probably police is the most popular. We probably have about 14 different Facebook pages. So, but, but one of the criticisms is that maybe that's too much. So how do you do that? But that's what I, that's what we would like to talk about.
So is there one spot you can go to, and then you can go to those different? And with all due respect to the finance department, we need them, God bless them, but it's not the most sexy thing in the world.
It'd be a little new city there. Let's...
So...
No, it, yeah, I think those are the types of things. If you'd like, council, I think that's something that we've talked about with staff, let's schedule either a presentation or a workshop, depending on what your schedules provide. We got a couple workshops coming up, so we got to be careful about not overdoing it because when we have workshops, we typically have them before the meetings, and that's asking you to come in at 5:00. Maybe we just do a presentation, just like we did with Ellers tonight. If we got a little time at the beginning of a meeting, you can learn about it and come loaded with your questions and look at the, you know you're from Oshkosh page, because there's lots of opinions out there.
Oh, it's real good. Yeah, it's real good.
So I'd be happy to do that if that's what council would like.
Perfect.
Yes, please.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Beal?
Yeah, I'd like to move to appoint councilperson Esslinger as director of our TikTok.
You got to tell me what it is first.
Please, nobody second that.
Thank you.
On that topic roughly, we've had chats. We don't always, we can always improve our communication. It's things we've chatted about in closed session, it's things we've chatted about during[1643.78] about during the city manager review process. Continue to tell our story better, right, Mark? I mean, it's, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. Always room for improvement, but interested to hear what city staff has for some suggestions, and what they're working on.
Thanks for the feedback.
Future workshops, housing workshop, infrastructure subdivision code, June 27.
Yeah, we thought we'd give ourselves a little more time, so that it'd give you time to get your sea legs, and then this is something, looking at the subdivision code, Councilmember Stevenson and I talked about it during our little pre-discussion before we got on the, got on the council. So, I think it's something we need to take a look at our subdivision code. That was a recommendation that came from the housing study, so I think we need to have a specific discussion about that. So we're looking at June 27th, which is a regular council meeting day, so that might be one of those that you'd have to come in early. So, I would plan on a 5:00 start time on that one. And then, because we put the budget calendar together a couple months ago, before Kelly asked about doing that for that day, the CIP, the first budget workshop, where we talk about capital improvement plan, and our borrowing plan, not just specific to 2023, as we did tonight, but our long-term borrowing plan, where a lot of the details that Mr. Allen talked about tonight, we get into, we get our hands dirty and really get into it. The workshop of that is a Wednesday, June 28th, so if you can mark it on your calendars. We typically start at 5:00, but we can be flexible. So if you've got some conflicts, let us know in advance, and we can, we can set the time. So those are the upcomers.
Councilmember Stevenson, you have something.
Yeah, not that I wanna go crazy with workshops right now, but when is special assessments? Is that looped in with the topic of A, or would that be a separate?
I owe the council my first quarter report.
Okay.
And Mr. Van Gompo, and Mr. Robbie and I have put together what we believe are some options that you may wanna consider. It's input that the previous council had given, but we wanted to wait until the new council was seated, and given the fact there's four new people, I'm really glad we waited until the new council was seated. So, you'll hit the ground running for all of you, but I know you've heard it, Councilmember Ford's already shaking his head, he's been chomping at the bit for it. I think there's some options. I think there's some options we can at least present to you. It's really gonna come down to cost, you know, where the cost goes, but I've got a draft that I'm planning to give you with my first quarter report, which is...
And that would be at a council meeting? At a, at a separate workshop, or?
How about an answer is, yes, yeah, both.
Either way.
It might, it might warrant a workshop based on it, but I at least wanna give you the range of options, so you can start looking at it, start thinking about it before, before you even get to a workshop, because I want the rest of you to get caught up to speed on this, and there's a lot of stuff. There's so many different considerations there, and up and down the valley, you're seeing this issue. This issue is not just specific to Oshkosh. We've been talking about it, though, for 10 years, and still haven't gotten a solution. So, it's, it's, sometimes it's, we got a great solution, but implementing it is a problem. So, yeah, so whether it's a workshop or not, we'll get it to you.
All right, on the council member announcements and statements, this is typically where we have at least a designated spot if council members wanna report back from their liaison opportunities. Obviously, a few of you haven't had any of those, those instances yet, but if, or any other announcements you have that are for the general welfare of the community. Before we go into city manager announcements and statements, and he may even touch on it, so I might take his thunder away, but tonight's the last night for City Clerk Falcon, before she advances onto her new role with transportation, and just wanna say a huge thank you for everything you've done for us, for the, for the Clerk's Department, helping us stay on track and doing your role here. So, on behalf of us, on behalf of the community, thank you for serving us, and it's great that you get to actually stay with us and serve in another capacity. So, just wanna say thank you.
Very grateful for the last several months here, and I've learned a ton, and very appreciative of all that you do for our community, so thank you very much.
The next meeting, we'll have a new city clerk sitting up here, guiding us through the process, so we'll welcome her in a few short weeks. Councilmember Bealow, and then we'll go on to city manager announcements and statements after that, I think.
The only thing I wanted to say is thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the work that you're doing on trying to organize our boards and commissions, and the communication has been excellent, so thank you.
No, I appreciate that, but hopefully, next meeting should be on the agenda for approvals. I'll have, I'll reach out to our newest council member, see what her desires might be for boards and commissions, and then be able to put it on the agenda. City manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, and thank you for taking one of my items off my checklist with Jesse.
You can do it again.
Yeah, I got a handful of memos in your packet, just for the new council members. Certain purchases only require city manager approval, joint purchases, joint cooperative purchases with either the state or another governmental entity, those are ones that we, those are ones that I report to council. Also, any, any professional services of less than $75,000, I report to council. Anything over $75,000 requires council approval. So, that's sort of the parameters of what, what we do, and that's all within our purchasing ordinance. So, we hire divers, and that's a professional service. They're really checking out the water intakes. We haven't inspected them for a number of years. We have two water intakes, and a very old one, which is one that's long overdue. It's our backup intake, and a couple years ago, we had a problem with our main intake, and we're like, wow, we really need to inspect these things. So, we're doing it on a regular basis, so we have a diving company doing that. Phase 1 environmental consulting for the Mill on Main, that's part of the contract, that we get that, just, we get that done. We have a little amendment for some additional services that were required with that one. Mentioned cooperative purchases, we've got two for the electrical vision that the memo's in the packet, and then body armor for the police department, so that's also a cooperative purchase. And then, zero-turn tractor, forward, four-wheel drive, utility vehicle, cemetery. So, those are all the purchases, and you'll typically see those. There's more this time, I think, I'm not sure why, but they're there, and they're all budgeted within the, in our capital improvement program. The strategic plan for the first quarter, the strategic plan, we do, this is the first quarter of our new biennial strategic plan. The report is online, so I'm glad that Ms. Bartley got that done before she changes offices next week, so I really appreciate Diane doing that for us. So, hopefully, we'll get it, the second quarter one will be on time and everything. They're starting recruitment, because I get very lonely up there, and so I'm gonna need somebody to do this for me. But it's online, you can take a look at it. If you have any questions, feel free to give us a call, and you, you'll know where Diane is too, if you have any questions. The, I have council portrait here. Now that we have all seven of you, class picture day is May 23rd. Is that May 23rd, or is that, what day of the week?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
That's Tuesday, okay, so.
It's the second, it's the second council meeting of May.
Okay. So, we note the new date, so it'll be 5:00 to 6:00 PM. So, that's, that's your dress-up day, everybody, so you'll know that. And then, just as an aside, primarily for new councilmember Hayes, but also the other ones who heard this earlier, Andy Raddick will be, because Diane moving, we're gonna have Andy Raddick, our communications coordinator, coordinate all of the tours. If there's any orientation tours that you would like, we'd love to take you, we won't take you with the divers to go look at the intake, but we will take you to the sewer plant, or the water plant, to take a look at those things, and certainly, you know, if you want that, we will schedule that. We can work on your schedule. I know with so many of you having, you know, eight-to-five type jobs, we can't always, you know, we have to accommodate your schedule, and we'll work it out. So just, Andy will take, work through it with you.
On that note, if you don't mind me interjecting, just a plug for that, please reach out, please try to do those, they're highly valuable. They're also, you know, it's a great learning process about what we do, how we do it, and honestly, with how few people, we really do it, especially when you get into some of the public utilities, the water, the treatment, those spaces, you'll be quite surprised with, with how little resources we do what we do. So, I highly encourage you to get out there, and I know all staff will make you feel welcome and take you through the process. Sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to interject, but...
Wonderful.
Wanted to plug it.
Wonderful color commentary, thank you. And then finally, the council asked me to put outstanding issues that they've, just want us to keep an eye on for you, and so I provide a bi-week, or twice a month, give you a report on that. So, just a few updates in there, and I just encourage you to read that, and if you have any questions, you know, feel free, as you look at them over the weekend prior to a meeting, you know, either give me a call, or just, you know, ask at, ask at the meeting, happy to do that. I typically put my four specific goals, or however many goals council gives me, I usually put them in there as well, just to get you an ongoing update of things, so, and I'm happy to talk to you about those things. And for councilmember Hayes, we should probably schedule something that, that we go through some things, just to get you up to speed on some of the behind-the-scenes stuff, and then the city clerk and the city attorney's office will do all the conflict of interest, if they haven't already done it, conflict of interest, open meetings laws, things like that. So, you'll be, you'll be hearing from the attorney and clerk's office soon as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, for the last five years, I've prided myself on being the one to always quickly make the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And, so there it is. Do I have a second?
Second.
You can sit down now, you can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody.